This meeting to order of March twenty eighth and they will have Hudson Hornick lead us some of the questions.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Okay, Councilmember Hornick.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Here.
And Mayor King.
Here.
And any reordering of the agenda?
No, sir, not this evening.
Public comments, I have one from Sandy Lincoln.
And the princess.
Okay. Julia and I are here to say. Swing. It's being. You know. We're bringing them.
That was great.
Thank you for bringing the swing.
All right, you're welcome.
We play with them at least once a week.
Nice.
We really appreciate it.
Over, over at the.
Yeah, over at Village Park.
In the shade, right? Handsome shade.
One of your smallest citizens is here to say thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
It was just for you.
So happy.
We're exactly who you, we had in mind when we did that. She's exactly who we had in mind when we did.
Yeah, yeah, we get a swing together. Yeah.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Should we end the meeting now?
Yeah, we're not, okay, and the next meeting will be. We don't have a high note. You want to come up now, eh, Jane?
Well, I gotta leave. How about John?
Uh, he wants to speak on another item.
Thanks for talking to me tonight. Uh, pedestrian bicycle safety as well as slowing traffic is a center point of the general plan. Public safety should be in the forefront of all decision making. Senator Hart's office tells Cal, tells us that Caltrans has received no plans from the city to modify two forty six or lower speed limits. Despite the two full-time traffic officers, surveys show speeding is unabated. I am sure some of you saw the crash in front of Tom's today. We intend to file a FOIA with the Sheriff Brown's Office. In two weeks to determine how many citations have actually been given. We'd really like the patrols to get out in the center of action. We see him like cruising around Avenue to the flags where there's not much going on. We really, uh, CHP, I love it when they get out in front of traffic and they start flashing the red lights. It stops. Everybody out of control speeding. So anyway, we'd like to see some road mods and immediate improvements could include crosswalks and stoplights. To create friction, friction is something you do to make actually drivers feel more uncomfortable. They're way too comfortable out here. A point I'd like to make, two forty six bisects long poke. And they've received over a million bucks in pedestrian safety grants. I don't know why long poke can't do the same. I'm, uh, no, long poke. Has actually received over a million bucks in grants. I'm just wondering why we can't. So in closing. I, I'm sure you all saw the accident out there today in front of Tom's. You've got projects Hyatt Hotel, you've got the Polo Village. Uh, you've got the Garden Apartments. McMurray's gonna go down to a failing grade, so I can't see how we can even be discussing even an urban growth boundary. Uh, we got lots of room for affordable housing mandates. Uh, there's over a room for sixteen hundred units as we speak. And ADUs can be added to any single family dwelling now. So let's not add to the problems here in Beelton, let's fix our infrastructure, which is way behind development. Thank you.
All righty. So let me clarify a couple of things on your comments. When the fire patrol is out in front of people with the lights on, it's called a round robin. And it's because there's some kind of traffic hazard in the highway. They're not doing it to slow traffic down. So one officer slows the traffic down, another officer runs out, gets the hazard, throws to the side of the highway, since I've done a million of myself. Um, the other thing about the two forty six, and we've talked about this ad nauseam in this council chamber, is the highway two forty six belongs to Caltrans. We cannot do anything on that road without their permission. So if you want to lobby someone, that's gonna be out of Sacramento.
Yeah, okay, may I just respond?
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, we have to submit a plan, I believe, that's, that's be tagged, and then that goes to LACCO. And then they go under, uh, what is that, of that nine eight, uh, funds. But it has to come from the cities, might I put it standard.
Well, and anything going on a two forty six has to be approved. We've asked for things on that road and they flat out said no. They have to do a survey. If you want to put a crosswalk in, they do a survey. If you want to put a light in, they have to do a survey. They have to negotiate with us, we negotiate with them. And if nothing gets done out there without their permission.
Can I piggyback on that? Ju- ju- just to say they're spending fifty one million bucks on Gabiota.
Okay, that's a conversation for a different day.
What?
That's a conversation for a different day.
Well, I just. Yeah, I'd like to just quickly, because you know, it's not an agenda, as I said, we can't really speak to it, but we could respond to the comments just generally. And I want you to know, you did, we are, we did commission Tetra Tech, is it Tetra Tech?
No, it's AOA.
AOA, uh, independent, um, I don't know, traffic.
Traffic engineering firm.
Traffic engineering firm to, to discuss the matters with, uh, Caltrans and see what they'd be receptive to. And see what we could do about skinnying the two forty six or adding friction or, you know, doing a number of those things. That actually came up a couple city council meetings ago. And that was approved, so, so we are actually making strides to do that and to, and to address the issue with Caltrans. And thank you for bringing that to our attention, I appreciate you.
That is already in negotiation.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to set calendar, minutes of March fourteenth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting. This is claimed to be ratified and approved for payment to date fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, receive and file twenty three annual report, status of the general plan. And monthly treasurers report February twenty ninth, twenty four. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second. Window.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornick.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor King.
Aye. And not seeing any presentations, we'll move on to public hearing, urgency ordinance number twenty four oh two. There is the ordinance of the city council, the city of Beelton, California, amending chapter nineteen point zero two point two ten of the Beelton Municipal Code pertaining to permit requirements and appropriate zones for emergency shelters. Twenty four dash Z O A dash zero one, and this will be Director Andrea Kiefer.
All right, good evening, Mayor King and members of city council. State law requires that cities provide for a variety of housing types, including emergency shelters. It further requires that a city identify a zone or zones in its housing element where emergency shelters are permitted. Are a permitted use by right. State law also states that cities may identify additional zones where emergency shelters are permitted with a conditional use permit. Currently, the Beelton Municipal Code allows emergency shelters by right in the CR or general commercial zone. And via a conditional use permit in the CS or service commercial zone, industrial and multifamily residential zones. It has become increasingly apparent that the preservation and enhancement of the existing commercial corridors in Beelton is vital for maintaining a healthy economic base and increasing the quality of life for residents. And as such, commercial corridors throughout the city, including the Avenue of Light specific plan area, require thoughtful and careful development. What is before you this evening is an urgency ordinance to modify the Beelton Municipal Code and the zones in which emergency shelters are allowed by right. And with a conditional use permit. Uh, with the purpose of harmonizing the city's commitment to the unhoused with its need to thoughtfully develop its, the city's commercial corridors. So upon review of state law requirements pertaining to emergency shelters and current best practices in other cities. As well as a review of the current Beelton Municipal Code, staff recommends that the following modifications to the code, uh, be made. To correct and clarify the allowable land use table for commercial and industrial zones. So number one would be to remove emergency shelters and as an allowable use in the CR zone. Number two would be to modify the permit type to zoning clearance required for emergency shelters in the M zone. So essentially swapping out the by right from CR zone to M zone or industrial zone. And then third, uh, to remove emergency shelters as an allowable land use in the CS or service commercial zone. The proposed modifications in this urgency ordinance would allow the Beelton Municipal Code to remain, um, in compliance with state law. In that it would still identify a zone where emergency shelters are permitted. Uh, are a permitted use without discretionary review, which would be in the industrial zone. And would still allow shelters, um, in the RM or multifamily residential zone after a conditional use permit process is undertaken. Um, in addition, the proposed modification would allow the CR zone to become more aligned with statewide trends, um, and the intended long-term goals, uh, for commercial development in the city. Uh, it's important to maintain the integrity of the commercial zones throughout the city. Um, if the city does not adopt an urgency ordinance, the city could be potentially be left with no way to properly regulate the location and placement of emergency shelters. Um, although at this point, there does not appear to be an immediate need for an emergency shelter in Beelton. Uh, the trend, uh, in terms of the need for these types of facilities, um, continues to go up throughout the state in general. And so adoption of the urgency ordinance and ultimately a permanent ordinance, uh, will protect and enhance the existing commercial corridors in the city. Um, and protect the future orderly development of, of land within the city. So a copy of the urgency ordinance is included in your packet as attachment one. Um, by adopting this ordinance, the city council will provide the city, uh, with protection against, um, development, um, of this type. While a permanent ordinance is drafted, um, it is anticipated that a regular ordinance will be brought back, uh, before the planning commission for a public hearing for recommendation to city council, uh, in the coming months. So this evening, the recommendation is that the city council consider adoption of urgency ordinance twenty four dash zero two. Which would amend the Beelton Municipal Code pertaining to permit requirements and appropriate zones for emergency shelters. Uh, that concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Alicia, any questions?
No.
Oh, my quick question is, generally speaking, the industrial zone to average, or, or where is our industrial zone in Beelton? Is it just all obvious?
So, um, it's actually in the, the gray area. Um, yeah, so where it's labeled M, so, um, North McMurray and then Industrial Way, the majority of Industrial Way.
Yeah. Um, my question is this part right here. This already has a development plan on.
Right.
So is that, so would that be subject to an emergency shelter situation?
Um, if the zoning is changed by rights to the industrial zone, um, it, it could be, but it would be the property owner that would, you know, make the decision whether or not they would like to locate something of that nature there. Um, as of right now, there's an existing entitlement, but.
Right, gi- given the size of that parcel and the existing entitlement on that parcel, it's highly unlikely. Um, where you would see these tend to be the smaller industrial and manufacturing parcels. Um, and again, the point of this is to do a more thorough study. Right now, uh, the point is to move the potential for shelters out of the CR zone, but there has to be a place where they're allowed by right. Um, I understand what you're saying about that parcel and, and as I say, as a practical matter. It's so unlikely that it would happen, I, I, I can't imagine circumstances under which it would happen.
Right. Um. Will we guys stay as an interview and come back to it?
It, it'll first come back in forty five days with an update and to extend it and give you a better idea about how long it's gonna take. And what steps staff has taken over the forty five days, um, to sort of move this down the road. But as with any full, uh, permanent zoning ordinance, it has to go to the planning commission and then two hearings with you before it's finalized. So, um, it, it, it does take some time just to do that and, and in light of the discovery that the CR zone was going to allow emergency shelters, uh, that, that, this is the best thing that we can do in the, in the interim. From a legal standpoint.
So councilor, just for clarification, this has to be a shelter. It's gonna be people throwing tents up. This has to be a designated building as a, a shelter for.
Correct, yeah, an, an emergency shelter is a building where people are out of the elements. It, it, again, conceivably could be, um, a tiny house village, which you have seen uh, rolled out in, in various jurisdictions. That's the only thing that wouldn't be a single larger building, would be a, a tiny house village. But again, that's e- e- essentially a regulated kind of development, it's not loose tents, it's not, it's, it's, th- those are a type of development, correct?
Yeah, correct, um, the, the big, I, I think the big hindrance to a development of this sort on this property is, um, development of property costs a tremendous amount of money. Um, running utilities to that piece of property, um, putting in the required infrastructure in terms of streets and such, uh, to get an access to get to that is gonna far outweigh any potential for, um, uh, for, for financial gain on the part of the people that own it. It, it's, it's much more viable to find an existing building, usually at a smaller piece of, of property. Um, industrial, um, zones in most cities tend to be where these get focused because industrial zones are where you will find the kinds of buildings that they're, they, they will often move into. Basically, un- unimproved shells of buildings, they could be old offices, they could be warehouses, something where someone can move in there. Um, uh, fix the place up, provide the required services to provide the shelter. That particular piece of property is, is not really suitable for, for that, so.
Hey, David.
Any questions?
Um, but the, the question was the, um, without discretionary review, that's the code that they can come and put, that they've used for the, uh, low-income housing.
It's, you know what, it's similar to that, those, those are without discretionary review under different state laws, but yes. Um, the best way to think about without discretionary review is like a single family home in your general residential zone. They come in, it's allowed, it's just allowed, so they go right to building permit. Uh, there's a very quick zoning clearance to make sure that where you plan to put it isn't in a setback, you're not on an easement where there's a storm drain underneath, very quick, but as long as the use is allowed by right, you can go forward and then move into building permit. So yes, and, and we have to by state law have at least one zone where we have no control over whether you're allowed or not, we might have some control over where on the lot you're allowed. But it's, it's gotta be allowed or, or, uh, we're in violation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Like us follow up. What's up? We still have any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Mr. Murphy. So Mr. Murphy, my concern is the tiny home village thing that you mentioned. Uh, my concern would be somebody selling the piece of property and saying uh, you know, we're gonna do or or you know, even threatening to sell this property and say we're gonna do tiny home village, county has need for that. Uh, and in that instance, the tiny home villages as to to find themselves as an emergency shelter. It sounds like it would be something of overflow for temporary housing, right? Temporary housing while you get back from your feet or halfway housing type situation. Is that accurate?
That's generally what they are, but they do require um some amount of um what the city manager said, the electrical to run to it, uh water to run to it. Um, wastewater to run out of that. And so uh a lot that's not developed is generally not going to be developed for one of those because they just don't have, you you don't have the the necessary infrastructure to make it work. But but yes, that is what those are.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from the public?
No, sir.
Anything further from staff? Sir, okay, I'll bring it back to uh council for further discussion or possible motion.
I would just like to say that I understand the city's desire to do this, and I think that it's a good thing to do. Um, but I do have great concerns about the potential for usage in those industrial zone areas, so I'd like to look at what we can do as on a permanent ordinance basis, the sort of better zone where this might go.
We we've begun looking at that already.
And that and that is a big part of why this needs an urgency ordinance, because the full solution is more complicated than just finding a new zone. And so that is the short term solution, but definitely not the full term solution. I I do want to just note um and it's in the staff report, but uh an urgency ordinance does require a four fifths vote to go into um effect. So we we do need when when the mayor does call for for a motion. Um, please understand that if if you are interested in seeing it adopted, we do need four fifths, not three fifths tonight.
Okay, and it is my understanding that staff is looking at some other locations or locations that this could effectively be used.
We're looking at at um not necessarily other locations, but trying to better fine tune um where these types of uses can go beyond just the industrial zone.
Gotcha.
And what's time for coming back on this?
We'll need to come back with an with an ordinance to extend this within forty five days and then we'll have um ten months and fifteen days after that to return with a formal ordinance, a final ordinance.
But we'd obviously like to.
It would be done much sooner than that.
That's right.
Okay, anything else, John? David? I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Sanchez. And Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Horneck.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi.
All right, let's move on to council member comments or items. John? Thank you. Think that was reflecting off the counselor's glasses.
At the top of my head.
Yeah. John, have any uh comments or items?
Um, not at this time.
David? Nope. Alicia?
No.
Yes, I had a couple of comments. Um I wanted to follow up on uh AJ's comment about the sheriff uh and two forty six. Um, appreciate the motorcycle officer out there doing their thing. Appreciate the sheriffs going out there doing their thing. I did want to mention this, and I think I might have mentioned this earlier. Um, that I know we park a vehicle over there for the sheriff's department, and I think as I know right now, it seems like the the idea is to see the fact the motorcycle officer is having on traffic, but long term, I would like to just, you know, float it by the sheriff instead of parking right here, they could literally park thirty feet this way and they could potentially slow down traffic just by dint of having a vehicle out there. That's that's something I want to suggest. Um, and I also wanted to suggest I know we had previously discussed the idea of trying to figure out what library hours we could extend, and we're looking at the cost of that is my understanding. Um, but even just cycling um the hours to be open on Sunday is instead of Monday, I think is something that could be effectively done without much cost or without any cost.
Well, I I I will, I will um certainly talk to our library staff about that. I have not been able to get a hold of the the person I've been dealing with here lately. Um but it it is a little bit more complicated than that because these are not full time employees. For the most part, they're part time employees and they have a certain number of hours. And so to create the staffing we've got for the hour structure we have, they're they're set up for that. If we shorten or lengthen the length uh that the a a particular day, then that would may necessitate bringing another staff member in. Um, or altering that staff member's contract. So it's a little more complicated than just adding a couple hours here or there because those aren't our staff members there. The libraries and their part time staff for the most part, but we will certainly look into it.
I understand that. Thank you. I was just saying that we didn't have to extend hours. We could just literally drop Monday and add Sunday.
Oh, we we can, yeah, we we can look at that if that's uh if that's the council's desire. We all I'll talk to her when she gets back in touch with me about just possibly switching days.
Thank you.
And as with regard to the sheriff's department, I spoke uh with the lieutenant earlier this week. And we should have a report from the sheriff's department on um uh, the it's basically would be a citation report from the sheriff's department for the time that the uh motor deputies have been back on duty here. Um, and as soon as I get that, I'll put that out to the council.
Thank you. That might potentially preclude your Freedom of Information Act request there, AJ. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and I will follow up on that comment that um one, these motorcycle officers like Scott pointed out is that they're on a limited time basis. And in four hours, they're writing approximately ten tickets in four hours, which was humping. Uh, so they're out there doing their job. Um, I have been hearing a lot of social media stuff or people on the street or whatever, saying that the motorcycles are out there, they've seen them, people are starting to to realize that these guys are not going away and it's not just a one time thing. Uh, so I think that it's going to take some time for you to slow that traffic down. Um we used to do things called uh ACE, which is augmented speed compliance uh on freeways. And when the freeways would get the traffic speeds would get too high, we'd send about ten motorcycles out there and we write probably five hundred tickets. Um, when we went out there. So uh people are just gonna have to see these motorcycles. Where they are parking is, and I can tell you, being a motorcycle officer myself, is it's gonna be for your safety and the safety of the public. So it's not necessarily that you're just sitting there um showing the paint. You're gonna be someplace where it's safe for you and the motor in public. And and trust me, and I have been promised by our lieutenant that he's gonna give me some statistics, and I think that you will all be pleasantly surprised at how many tickets these guys are writing. And it's only gonna take you getting one three hundred and fifty dollar ticket. You're not gonna do that again coming through Beelton. So it's gonna take them time to get to everybody. Okay, uh written communications.
Not this evening.
No written communications, committee reports, John?
Would I did the CCWA meeting today and uh well, we had some talk about some litigations and stuff, but no- nothing big, nothing new. And uh went through the budget and they're looking good, gonna cost about three percent more. For state water, I think was what they came up with. But uh that's it. And then uh I also went to the uh chamber commerce meeting. And uh talked to them a little bit. And that was Tuesday. That was all.
Guess this would have been more under public or comment comments, but I just wanted to share that um the Beelton School District unveiled their first electric bus and they will have a second one. And many people were concerned that buses don't have seat belts. I don't remember that they, I don't think they did when we were kids. Um, but they do now, so congratulations to that. So if you're worried about school buses not having seat belts, they have them now. I couldn't fit in them, but they do have them. So anyway, but yeah, so thank you to the everyone who worked with the school bond to make that happen, and now we have electric buses.
I went for a cruise too and it was a little tight seeing, but it was.
The knee really, yeah, the the knees don't fit. Yeah.
Uh, no, I was discussing things with the green team. Um, and we're sort of circling around the idea of a tree city uh designation for Beelton, but that's gonna incorporate a lot of different um pieces. So I understand, Mr. Wolf, you were talking to them about some of that, and I need to circle back with you and
Yes.
Oh, so more more to come on that.
No.
Sure, no. Uh, went to an SB CAG meeting and APCD um recently, um basically talked about future funding for some projects that are coming up uh and some employee compensation, so that's about it. Uh let's move on to business items. Number six, ordinance number twenty four zero one, ordinance of the city council of city Beelton, California, adding Beelton Municipal Code, section nineteen point ten point one four zero, providing for certification for review of certain discretionary land use planning proposals for immediate city council consideration, second reading. And this, once again, will be our planning director, Andrea Kiefer.
All right, uh, good evening, Mayor King and members of city council. On March fourteenth, the city council introduced and held the first reading of ordinance number twenty four dash zero one, which is an ordinance adding a section to the Beelton Municipal Code, providing for certification for review of certain discretionary land use planning proposals. The proposed zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance amendments are included um in the attached um ordinance number twenty four dash zero one. So the recommendation this evening is that the city council consider adoption of ordinance number twenty four dash zero one. Adding uh this section to the Beelton Municipal Code, providing for certification for review. Uh, that concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff? Anything, anything from the public?
No, sir.
Bring it back to council for a um possible motion, further discussion if there is any.
I'd move to approve ordinance number twenty four oh one as presented.
I'll second.
Hey, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Horneck. Uh, Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. All right, let's move on to the number seven, discussion of Meals on Wheels funding issues. This will be discussion and a possible direction for staff. And this will be a manager, city manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, as you'll recall, at your February twenty second meeting, there was a request uh to uh invite Pam Nico, the executive director for San Andres Valley Community Outreach, to attend a an upcoming city council meeting to discuss uh funding issues that are being had, particularly with the Meals on Wheels program. Uh, we have invited Ms. Nico, Mrs. Nico here tonight. She is here. Yeah, I thought I saw her come in. And um uh she is here to to discuss the matter with the council and staff will sit by quietly and wait for directions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I have two speakers on this, and I will start off with Christine Correno.
Thank you for having me again. I I did have the opportunity to speak two weeks ago because I thought I was gonna be absent from this meeting, but since I'm here, I figure I'd go ahead and uh say it's good to see all of you at once tonight and not just on the Zoom, so it's it's great to see y'all here. Um, but in a in a not serious moment, um gosh, the Meals on Wheels program has been fantastic. What the city has been doing to support um thus far has been fantastic, and I'm just hoping that you guys are able to find a way to dig a little deeper and maybe find something that's maybe not quite as relevant this particular funding year. And then we can look at long term uh things, at other things that we may be able to do collectively together as a community, but um but right now, I I would strongly encourage you to uh to dig deep as you can and um I'm saying this on behalf of not just myself, but I said before, I have a family member that relies on the uh Meals on Wheels here in Beelton, and it just excites him every day, never knows what he's gonna get. And so he 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 just loves it and it's nourishment for his soul as well. And there are many, many others in our park as well that depend on that, and that's really why I'm here tonight. So thank you all for your time and your commitment.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, I will call up Pam Nico.
Hi, guys. Hi, Mayor Mayor King, city council members. Thanks for having me. Not sure how to start. Do you want me to just give you a rundown of what we're doing? Do you want to ask me questions?
Specifically, what's the need?
The need is what the need is always. The need is always money. So here's how did we get here, because it seems like that we keep coming to you. Um, so here's what's happened. For the last forty eight years, we've worked and been somewhat self supporting um until about the last five years, you you have increased your funding for us, particularly last year. Because we we got into a situation where we really needed costs way up um from the pandemic and we lost um and we lost funding and we increased. So I've been here seventeen years. And um three weeks ago, I wrote a letter that I thought I'd never write to all of our clients, increasing um increasing their meals. If they were, if they were paying for meals, it went from five dollars to seven. And if they were getting a scholarship meal, it went from nothing to three dollars. Doesn't sound like a lot. Um, it almost caused me to use some mental health services for the county because it was hard for me. And turns out it was really hard for them. It was hard for a hundred and eighty nine of them because we lost them all. Um, that's how many went off of our roster in the last three weeks. So how did we get here? The main reason we got here is last year we ran at a hundred and tens, a hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit. And how did that happen? Meals on Wheels of America had been funding a seventy thousand. They decided um last year, uh the year before, to go to a urban funding program. And that meant that they thought that there were more seniors living in their cars, more seniors in the urban areas needing Meals on Wheels than there were rural. I went to Arlington, Virginia, and I fought for that to say that, yes, yes, I, and for sure, there were more people that needed their help in urban areas, but the urban areas had more opportunities for to get help from different sources than we do. Beelton's considered a rural community. Um, I asked them at that time too, because we were so close to Santa Barbara and we were right there on the edge of they could reconsider. And they said to go ahead, put in the grant this year, they would try again. It gave me a little bit of hope. They decided to not um change their funding. There was five hundred and forty seven communities that applied for their grants and they funded two hundred and sixteen of them, all urban. Not us. So that again took out, back out the seventy thousand, backed it out. Um, we went from another grant from the county, um our ask was forty thousand. They did approve it two weeks ago to twenty two thousand over um and to do it by the by the quarter. So um we are very grateful for that twenty two thousand. Um, however, it's the county uses what's called neighborly and a reporting system before they pay. It means that that about four thousand dollars, costs us somewhere between fifteen and two thousand dollars to do the reporting every quarter to get it. And so that puts a little bit of hardship on us. So what are we gonna do? Um, how are we gonna do this? Raising, I didn't particularly want to raise the cost for the meals, but um was kind of like, okay, let's see where, let's see where that goes and let's see what that does for us. And see how we can cut corners. So what we did was we immediately did a layoff of three employees. Um, we met with uh Jordano's who's our, one of our food supplies, Cisco, who's one of our food supplies and uh the food bank, the uh food bank of the county of Santa Barbara. We worked with uh Cisco and Jordano's immediately to buy the surplus. So what that meant is that instead of having some set menus, what I went into a contract with them that so say like the schools, the schools put in their orders a year in advance, right? So now they're off in the spring break. So now they've made a large order and they're not gonna use them. So we're going to buy that surplus at a greatly reduced cost. We don't exactly know what we're getting, but we'll make that work. Um, also Jordano's has gone back into um emergency um distribution with us like they did in the pandemic. I don't know if you remember, but council members, you brought in Jordano's and gave them a proclamation because of all the food emergency that they did with our center. We're back on that plan. That means that anything that they have like uh pellets of milk, pellets of cottage cheese, whatever it is that they have. They call us, we um we have a um an agreement with Caesar's U-Haul, we get a U-Haul, we go down and we get whatever it is that they will give us. We'll either use it We go down and we get whatever it is that they will give us. We'll either use it in the Meals on Wheels, or we'll put it out in the food distribution center out in the front. Um, so that helped us bring our cost. We were at eleven dollars and sixty cents a meal. We are trying desperately to bring that cost down to eight dollars a meal. Doesn't sound like a big thing, but it is, if you're talking that kind of, those kind of volumes. The other way, there, our biggest problem with Meals on Wheels right now, believe it or not, is workman's compensation. Um, we have gone from the last five years from eleven thousand to thirty thousand. And that's a huge, that takes up an entire grant for us. Um, I wrote to the Secretary of State, and they have agreed to take their CEO. Off of uh, the workman's comp, which um, we're gonna then ask for an audit with that, with that. That um, revision, it can reduce our workman's comp then down, because it goes by, it goes by your overall salary. The other thing is, we've asked them to find a way to, find a way to classify us. We have no classification. Because we're a nonprofit, and so they classify us as a restaurant. And because of that restaurant classification, there, you know, obviously restaurants make more money, they're open more hours, but they don't have a place to put us, so they put us through there. Um, and so that's, so we've asked for an audit, they're gonna come, they're going to um, try to see if we can't reduce that down. Um, we have um, started. A new program called Adopt a Senior. I've left there. Our very first um, sponsor of Adopt a Senior for a month of meals. Was the Buellton city manager Scott Wolf and uh, the Wolf family. And since then, we have had um, two other churches um, commit to us for two thousand dollars on each of those churches. And one private person. So the adoptive senior um, may be a real good plus for us. That being said, if nothing else, I had to be prepared for that. So what are we gonna do? Because if we thought that, that, that this couldn't happen. Um, four weeks ago, um, Long Polk Meals on Wheels, on a Thursday night, closed their doors, and there was no Meals on Wheels, I'm sorry. Um, the same thing happened to Meals on Wheels in San Luis Obispo. They had, the seniors had a week's notice to figure out that they weren't gonna have meals. That is a pig, big thing for um, homebound seniors, and also for family members who are depending on us. So I never wanted anything like that to happen to us. I knew our other programs would always be able, I would find a way to keep them going, but since Meals on Wheels. Um, and January and February was at a deficit of thirty-nine thousand, I had to keep that possibility in my head and try to figure out what to do. Found out, I know I'm talking really fast, but I got a lot of stuff to tell you, sorry. I found out that the Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens had a um. A federal government bill under the Older Americans Act. That said that, that Nixon put into um, put into the works that if a senior could stay in their home. And stay in their own home and just get meals, that that would happen. So this federal program exists, and so I called them, asked them to come down. Um, they're from San Luis Obispo. The um, they come down, they go to every single house. With us, fill out, do an intake assessment form. If they decide that the um, that the senior is um. Bedridden or homebound, totally homebound, that means they cannot leave their home. They can't find groceries or food from any other way. That they will um, mail, they will get ten meals every two weeks. From um, Arizona, FedExed to their door. They go into the freezer, they bring them out, they microwave them. There's some training. For that. And so I asked their director, um. I've looked this up, I've looked up, they're called mom's meals, I've looked it up. I can't really figure out a lot of information on it. Have you ever had one of these meals? They're awful. So. She said, the director said, it is the worst mediocre meal that you would ever have the unfortunate. Um, to take, being unfortunate to take. And I was just thinking, and I'm just gonna tell you. I literally chew out our chefs when he doesn't garnish our seniors' meals. So it was a big, it was a big deal for me. And also realizing that if we go to Long Polk, and we go to the federal penitentiary, they have onsite made meals every day. And we're seeing it, we're gonna send our seniors, those in ten meals a day. So. Oh, that one was a struggle for me. So I asked her, is there any other way? What else can we do? Like, is there any, is there somewhere in between that? And what happens when there's a senior who really needs the meals, but they're not actually bedridden? She said, well, if your kitchen, um, if your kitchen passes. And you have a dining room, we can make the meals in San Luis Obispo, and we can drive them here. And um, and then you can serve them, your kitchen can then dish them out and serve them like that. Okay. Can I enhance these meals? What can I do? Can I make, you know, can I make them, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to think, like, if I get a takeout from San Luis Obispo, what does it look like by the time I get here? Like, I'm just trying to figure out all these things, right? And so they have a very detailed. Plan on each and every meal, and no, we cannot enhance them, because it is um, done, it's kind of like a school meal. You, you have to do exactly what it says, so we can't do that. So, um, but what I did find out is that. This, the, these meals are not on income based. And our free, and our free scholarship meals are on income base. We go to a lot of trouble. And finding out who really needs us to do their free meals. We do intake, we go to their homes, we look at their bank accounts, we look at their social security checks, we look at how much the um, what their, what their rents are, and come up with. Um, if they really, if they really do need to have free scholarship meals. And I mean, it's not just like somebody calls and we say, oh yeah, here, we have some extra food, let's do this. They really have to go through a lot to get these free meals. And now I feel like I'm taking away one more of their dignity. So I'm just trying to look at all the ways that we can do it as a community, as we can help what we're doing, um. And that's why this was. So.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
Any questions for Pam?
I have a question. What is, in your perfect world, without having to get meals that are. Not to the standards that our community is used to? What would you need in order to, one, get you back on track for this year, and two, keep you moving forward?
So like I said, we were at a hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit, but we did get twenty-two of that back. So um, that, like, that brings us, so what is it?
Eighty-eight.
So that brings us, that takes us like, like even, like just even, if nothing else happens.
But that's even with increasing the meals to our seniors?
Right, because we don't know. I don't know what that looks like. We have it, our billing cycle goes, so we give them meals for the month, and we bill them at the end of the month. So um. I don't know how many are going to come off after they get the first bill. It's easy to say, I mean, I know how many immediately did. I just don't know how many will stop after they get, so if you, so. A lot of our people in the park, like, I don't know how much everybody thinks social security are, but there are a good majority of people here in Buellton. That are getting anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars, social security. So you take sixty dollars out of that, it sounds like not a lot to, to a lot of people. It's a big deal to them, like, it's a big deal. So I don't know, once they see it on paper, what that, what that looks like. I will tell you that we have some. That there is no way I'm taking off, like, I, and I've already told my board of directors that, they know, they will have meals one way or the other, no matter what. Because they've been with us all of these years, and they're not going to have what, what they have left of their life to worry about if they're gonna give us or not. That's not gonna happen in all, so.
Um, and how many did we lose? I'm just trying to figure out.
At this point, we lost a hundred, and I have to say it right, I have to look at it, because. You know, I've been in front of you guys for a long time, a lot of times, but every time, it's never easier. Eighty-nine, yeah, it's never easier.
So we need eighty-eight thousand just to get you even for this year, and that is with increasing the meals and losing about two hundred people. So eighty-eight isn't even really getting you back to where you were, because it's not covering the lost people, and it is not covering the increase in costs to the people who we are serving.
That's where they lost their employees. And my, yeah, my employees are on layoff. We're trying desperately to um, find them. Um, other employment. We're working in some of the restaurants in different places, then we're trying to get them, and we did not, however. Lay off any, we, we employed four of our domestic violence uh, clients, and we did not lay them off, because that's another, my other line in the sand, that's not happening either. I mean, we've just got them where they're comfortable in, in making and, and doing, we're not gonna uproot them. We, we made that commitment, so um. I keep saying my line in the sand, and I don't know what happens when I don't have that line, but um, I guess we figure it out day by day. I don't, I um. I don't know, that's, um, I, I never want. I um, I never want the city to think that you're my first choice, like. You're, I can't do it, and so I'm just gonna go, oh, this is easy, we'll just go to the city. I never want that. We try to do it ourselves. I'm working with um, Manuel Marano at US Bank. And they have a division there that works with nonprofits, and they're helping me um, restructure my board. Um, to bring in new board members, and active board members, and fundraising board members. I have a great board right now, we just need more of them. Um, we've added two new ones, which I'm very excited about. Well, one and one I'm badgering daily to come on, but um. So I, and I'm hoping we um, have big plans for Cars and Cowboys um, to, that that will increase, that it's been really good for us. And this year, it should be even bigger. We have really great people working on it, and um.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Um, so Pam, um, I should probably uh, do this, get this out of the way. I had ex parte communications with Pam. We discussed a lot of what she just told me. Or told, sorry, excuse me, the council, um, that was the extent of it. Uh, but I did want to ask, so it sounds like you're running the deficit, and do you know how long you have and what you need to be solvent going forward?
I keep doing it, we, month by month, we used to have a year budget, and I told my board of directors, I no longer have a year, a year budget, I have a month budget. Um, I make payroll, and I buy the cost of goods, and um, we've actually had a donor who um. Is paying for uh, gas for all of our uh, drivers. Our, you know, we have a lot of senior drivers who drive Meals on Wheels in their own fixed income, they can't afford the gas, so we were paying their gas. He's actually come up and said if they will continue to uh, deliver Meals on Wheels, then he will give a gas allowance to them for Meals on Wheels. So that is actually helpful. So I'm running on a, I am literally running on a month to month.
Okay.
Um, we have, we have a um, I've looked at all the options. We got an appraisal on our thrift store, which we, we guys know, we own the one on um, Highway two forty-six, and we got a million, and a million to appraisal on it. Um, and the um, and I thought then that we could. Get a line of credit on that and do it like that, so we can go from fundraiser to fundraiser, right? But the problem is that the bank, because it's a nonprofit, they require a. Org member to co-sign, and so far, I have not, I do not have that org member to do that co-sign, and they will not allow. The CEO to do it because of conflict of interest, so um, otherwise, we would have been done.
And Pam, you, how, what percentage would you say you, of Buellton, do you serve? Because you serve the entire San Andres Valley, right? So how much, how much?
I serve the entire San Andres Valley, but I don't serve the entire San Andres Valley with meals. I only serve Buellton. With meals, except, except that we do do Los Alamos, and um, and they do, they are, they are a hundred percent. They're, none of them are on scholarship. They're a hundred percent paying, and the way we do it is, we do make their meals. But we drive them over, someone, someone from Los Alamos meets us at the senior center, and then they do the distribution themselves. We also do Rhonda Barrett's, Rhonda Barrett's, they pay for their meals, so that, so we take them out, because those meals are paid for. That's an income producing for us that, you know, we're able to use and deal with quantity. Um, but now, do we service the entire community? Yes, with the food program. The um, the free produce program is, we do do the entire valley. But that program actually doesn't cost us money, because I use the USD, USDA, you know, um. USDA on that, and that is all free produce, and for the most part, we use volunteers for that, except that I have um, Linda, Litten, the um. Well, now she's, she's the new director. I have gone to CEO, she's the um, she's now the director, so that I can um. Look for money, and um, you have to be a CEO to be taken off of workman's comp. So um, um, so she gets that wonderful job, and she oversees that. The rest is, the rest of that food distribution is done by volunteers. And it's out to, I don't know if you've been here on a Monday, but the wait time right now is about an hour and a half around the library and over here, and then, so they, people are on foot. Um, getting bags this, in one direction, the other direction is um, cars coming in. I know we're a sheriff's nightmare, but they've been very kind to us about helping us now direct traffic, because we are a nightmare. Um, but that program doesn't cost us.
And I just followed you, I, we did have an ex parte conversation with Pam who brought this deficit to my attention, so um, you brought up that you serve. Buellton only in meals. Did you have a quantifiable number of how many people that was before the loss of one evening?
Before that, it was four hundred and nine.
Four hundred and nine, so a little less than.
Remember that sometimes there are um, more than one person in the family. So typically, there will be a husband, wife, and occasionally, there'll be a caregiver. Um, the caregivers, we, we don't usually have to worry about paying for them, because I got a twelve thousand dollar grant from um, the Cancer. Uh, Foundation in Santa Barbara to pay for caregiver meals.
Thank you.
And they, they have, they have. Said that they were trying, because they got the um, Ridley Free Money Grant, that they would be trying to give that, to put that up to twenty thousand next year, possibly. I'm going to talk to them, I think it's Tuesday, April second, and making a presentation to them to continue to do, to fund the caregivers.
Um, and then I wanted to, just a few other questions. One is, um, how much of your budget is private philanthropy funded? Like, it sounds, you know, like, when you think, because I know that a lot of times there'll be this discussion of like, well, that's what donations are for, but how much? It sounds like you're leaving no stone unturned. How much of your budget is?
Turned, so last year, we were at a, it, it cost us eight hundred thousand, the city gave us a hundred and seventy. And everything else is private, everything else is private.
So you're doing about seventy-five percent of that. And then, does this take in consideration at all that we have three buildings coming in with one of them being senior housing? That I would assume would likely qualify for your services, which would then increase the population e- even further?
I went last night and um, I went last night and drove behind Albertson's and looked at the new construction. And on the sign, it says self-help housing, and I went, self-help? That means our help. So um. By, by the nature of the new um, developments going in, they're gonna be ours. Because if they qualify for section eight, they qualify for us, because we use the very same criteria. Because we use the very same criteria that SimCal uses, that section eight uses, we use the same format. So if they qualify for that, they qualify for us.
Okay, and then finally, the only question, the last one I had was, okay, so if the deficit isn't funded. And if everything. Worst case scenario goes under. The only backup that four hundred and nine residents and at this point, a hundred and eighty nine financially couldn't even make it work, so a hundred and eighty nine people were just pressured into. Taking the best option they have is ten meals every two weeks provided from the services, the USDA service you referenced.
No, because they can only get those meals if they're bedridden.
Oh, okay.
They go in and see if they, if they, if they have a car, if they can drive, if they leave, that's the only people who will get those meals. So, so we will have to figure out whatever the L C S and the other, I mean, in our. What our other alternative would be, you can nev- a program can never go under and own property. So we would be selling then, the, we would have to sell the thrift store first. Before we could ever do that, because if you go under and then, but you own an asset, we would be distributing that. We would pay all the bills and then distribute whatever money is left over to another nonprofit. And then I would have to sell my house and move.
That's all I have for you, thank you, Patrick.
I would just, um, a hundred and eighty nine people just quit getting meals because of the three dollar cost.
They, they canceled, they called and canceled their meals, that is not exactly. How many have not received meals because some of them I will not deliver.
And the four hundred and nine. It's almost ten percent of the population.
It's, it is. We are, we are a senior community.
And the, and the senior qualification is how old?
It's fifty five, but we have very few fifty five year olds, our, our average age is. Probably sixty eight through, we, well, we have like, a couple of them are like ninety, ninety, over ninety in the park. And. We have a driver, if you look on our Adopt the Senior. Um, Adopt the Senior, the lady giving out the meals, her name's Betty, she's eighty four years old, she she delivers every day to the old people.
So she says, right? She helps.
We did, I will tell you the saddest thing and what, and the one of the ladies that we, we are not obviously taking off, she called me and said. You have a thrift store, right? And I said, yes, yes, we do, she said, can you come and buy my furniture and credit? My uh and then credit me for my meals. I said, no, I will not be doing that, you will be having meals. And the other, and the other thing is that we do have the second thrift store and, but we don't know where that, we don't know where that falls yet, I mean, we haven't had enough. Um, to find out what impact that's gonna have on us as of yet, I will.
My other question would um. Oh, just a comment, I actually had a lunch because I talked to Pam on Monday, Monday they're busy and I walked out of my. Water meeting and ran into the, what was going on, so I talked to Pam and I asked her what was for lunch. And it was chili rellenos and so. I did my duty to test one and I. Well, I wanted to see what, and because uh just to let people know that the food is excellent, the the presentation was nice. I did take it home, I shared it with my daughter and my granddaughter and uh my granddaughter got a nice cookie. And half, half cookie and uh anyway, it was, but it was, it was a nice, uh, just so everybody knows. This is not a cheap presentation, it's not, it's not uh cardboard food and or anything like that, so. Uh, it's important and I'm worried about the, I worry about the hundred and eighty nine people that would drop off, I don't think that should happen.
I will tell you that Rose Hess is working on one way to help us reduce costs, she uh works with the food, we work together with the food reclaiming. And they have a grant um for. Um, I think it's up to five thousand, it's not for money, it's for something, so um she's, so I ask her. Uh, we don't need refrigeration, but I've asked her, um, one of our, one of the big thing, a cost um problems. Is the containers that the food, that the food are, is in, so we have asked if possibly we could get a year. Of the containers, that would be about five thousand, so we're looking at pretty much every way.
Right, and and the monies that um Pam just mentioned, it's the city's um lag, it's called, graviation is lag. Funds, L A G. It escapes what it stands for, but. Thank you. It is from CalRecycle, it's provided, that's minimum amount uh for small agencies like us. Uh, we have more than that, more than five thousand available, we can help with different equipment. Um, other resources and appliances in their kitchen to help with food recovery, so certainly containers, things like that. Those type of tangible items we're able to assist with.
There was a group that Rose brought in from people all over the county that do the uh food rehabusing. And they came to because um our center is considered the example. Of the most effective food recovery um organization in the valley, we pick up every single day, we go to. Um, Albertson's, uh Valley Fresh, New Frontiers. Um, and pick up whatever, anything and everything that they have in surplus and come back and and put it into something.
And we have those monies available this fiscal year. Leaving to next fiscal, well, it's one fiscal year's worth, I think we can start in our calendar year, anyways, it's right now, it's a um. They're telling us it's a one-time thing, but it may be available again the following year, so. It's not a guarantee, we will get as much as we possibly can, that would help us into future years.
The other thing that has happened is Scott, um, or Scott, what the city manager has put us in contact with. The um city's grant writer and he is working really hard at trying to find. Any grant that the city could get for um for food nutrition or senior nutrition that, that the, that the city could write. And then we could, it could be passed on to us too, so I mean.
No stone unturned. No stone unturned. Can I ask Chanel? In terms of our budget and any excess fund balance, if we were to. Increase our allocation, is our budget able to sustain an increase, like? Of the magnitude that we're kind of discussing now?
Um, I've done some preliminary research yesterday in regards to a certain amount and how that will look like in the next five to ten years. If our T O T and sales tax consists to be the same, which they're dropping a little bit. It would withhold, but not in the long term. Uh, maybe the near five, five years, five to ten years the most, but other than that, you just have to be aware of that.
So. How helpful would it be if the city were to help for that timeframe while at the same time? Helping look for grants and finding ways to make it more sustainable, but making sure that it's not, it's not lost and. And our citizens, our most vulnerable citizens are not going without, like, would being able to help for even that five to ten year period? You know? Be helpful and give you enough time to get to a point where we could make it more sustainable?
Well, I mean, of course, of course, that right in will not, and we will continue, my, my goal is that um. When we, when we become, like when we're in the new building. Like, it seems like an old building to everybody else, but it's, it's such a huge step up for us. And bringing in other organizations and trying to get more funding, I mean, that is the goal, is to. Get more funding for ourselves and less, and I think that one of the ways that, I mean, possibly if the, if the city council agrees on that. That maybe we could have a review committee that works with, like, works with me, works with you and review this and see where we're at. Each year, each time and see where we're at and how, and what additional funds that we had coming in and, and that, and what that looks like. Um, we don't, we don't wanna take more than we need, we don't wanna ask, we wanna get as much as we can on our own. Um, at the same time, we just wanna keep the, you know, keep everybody going and keep this community going. So, and I would love like to work and have a review committee because. I mean, that keeps us all on this, on a good page together that you see what we're doing, we, you know. I don't know what you think about that, back in the um, there were other things that came up uh before, way back before the Williamson. Um, property was bought, um Judith Dale, Scott and I, and I don't remember who else was in that meeting, I just, I can't remember. But we had a discussion that, you know, um possibly because we do have a lot, they do have an asset in that. Um, in our um thrift store. That the city takes the thrift store, doesn't do our funding and we buy, we we buy the thrift store from the city. I know that there's all kinds of legal things from that, so I, we, I don't know how that works, if the city owns property, if they have to turn in the low income, I don't know. There are a lot of possibilities that we can look at it and um. All we wanna do is, I mean, I live in this community, I have, I have a lot of babies coming that live here now in this community, I want it to stay, I want it to be. Um, I'm, I'm all Buellton, so I don't want, I don't wanna do anything that's not good for Buellton and not good for the people here.
Well, sort of just getting things back on, on like what we can do today, uh I was gonna ask staff and city attorney what.
Well, let's see if she's finished before we go on to that and then we can ask that, you done Pam?
Yeah, whatever you want, or if there's questions.
I just wanted to see what we could do.
Let's wait till she's done and then we'll go on to asking them questions. Alright, okay, Sean, you got one more, one more question? We um. We, we had talked about. The possibility of the city buying the thrift store house. Um, and creatively financing it to where we're making a payment on the house and the payment on the house. Would go to. Uh, I could, with the interest and principal, whatever the payment we would decide it or negotiated. We would buy the house and the money that we would pay for the house would go into monthly. Towards the, towards, it would be an asset sold, but it would be in time and it would be a kind of a. Uh, we would be acquiring an asset for the city. And the, and the thrift store would be acquiring a, an income from their sale and if it was uh. It was set up right, I, I, I know there's a lot to be discussed with that and who's doing what's what and how to do. I, I mentioned it to Scott and I know there's a lot of legalities in it, but I'd like to propose that. That is maybe one of the options, and if one of the options is.
That once again, that's gonna be a conversation for a different day because that's not agendized.
Right, but uh, but my uh, my suggestion is to start an ad hoc committee. To uh work towards, one towards the idea, so we have ideas, we have, that's, it's an idea, that's, and then uh. The next thing coming up is another thing that will help and then there's gonna be, there's grants, something else that'll help. And whatever is, that is gonna be a benefit. But if we bottom line it, so we start with whatever they need monthly. And then work into a position where it can only, you know, we'll see what you make with fundraisers, we can also come up with different fundraisers that happen. When, you know, somebody might come up with something else and my proposition would be to kind of put us on the, on the hook to make them. Make them square until, well, the finances improve to get to. You know, eventually it comes square again, you know, with that, there's gonna be a grant, there's gonna be contributions or whatever, but at least we can assure. A set, uh, the, you know, shortfall if it's, if it's eighty eight thousand divided by whatever. That's seven, eight, that's seven thousand, seventy five hundred a month, whatever comes out to. But do it on a monthly, she's got a monthly budget now, we make up her monthly budget until the things that we can do. And and brainstorm and create and whatever and, and the things get better, things change, then it'll be less for us. But at least we could set it up to where we could get her flush until. Things are gonna change, things will get better, whatever, new ideas, whatever funding here and there, but at least we can take the deficit off. Off of, uh, her back and get us square until.
Well, like I said, John, that's gonna be something.
I'd like that to go to a bit, to be a goal, right, but for now, we can agendaize that in a different meeting, right, okay.
I just have, it's a very quick one. How many meals do you provide on a weekly basis to a senior? So, so it's, okay, so theoretically, the hundred and eighty nine who went from zero to three was a drop off and the revenue from that would have been five hundred and sixty seven dollars. Per week at for one meal, and so that's five times five and then times four, if that was to figure out, so you were trying to recover roughly. Ten thousand dollars on a monthly basis from, or I don't know if that's my, yeah, it's about ten thousand, so you were, the scholarship, the scholarships moving from zero to three. Was going to generate ten thousand dollars per month of revenue, which would arbitrage out to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of revenue. And that's like what was, like, you would need to recoup that hundred and twenty thousand to bring these hundred and eighty nine people back onto it. So when we're discussing some of these things, your budget's a hundred and ten thousand that you lost or your deficit. And so you'd need to be made whole, the one ten plus the one twenty to bring on the one eighty nine?
We're gonna bring the one eighty nine back, if we, if we're getting in a grant, we're bringing the one eighty nine.
So if you were to hit around a hundred and twenty thousand.
We won't, but we will keep, but we won't be going back to where the meals are eleven eighty, we will keep the meals down. And we won't be adding those, those.
So when discussing the deficit. To bring back the one eighty nine would be around a hundred and twenty thousand as additional funding required to get you back to bringing you up to those numbers.
Right, to get everybody back, back.
Okay, thank you.
For, for how long?
That's for a year.
That's a year.
For this fiscal year?
For this fiscal.
It costs a hundred and twenty thousand extra. They would need a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay, that was my last question.
That's it, I, and I'm always ex parte with you for something, I, I don't have any questions.
As I talk to you.
Yeah, right. I'm gonna ask Scott, what? How, how could we, if making any kind of donations, how could we get into a situation where it would become a public uh donation?
Well, um, and, and I, I know the city attorney is gonna weigh in on this as well. What we want to avoid is a simple gift of funds for the purpose of giving the funds, uh, the, the. Buellton Senior Center is unique amongst the nonprofits in the area in that we have create or we have. Created a relationship with them through our budget wherein they essentially provide social services on behalf of the city. So this is different from some other nonprofit if we were to take and, uh, and, and we do give grants to other nonprofits, but we don't. Generally fund a significant portion of their. Um, revenue every year, it, it is more along the lines of funding a particular project that they might have. With uh Buellton Senior Center or San Andres Community Outreach, um, what we are doing is we are. Using them as our social service arm, and so we actually have a budget line item every year that they get funding for. So we can. Again, I'm sure Greg will correct me on this if I step out a little here, but my, my guess here is that we can provide funding to them. Up to the point that uh either the money that's coming in is being used outside the city. Or that the money that's going to them is more than what is necessary to provide the services that they're providing on behalf of the city.
So we as a city are allowed to basically contract out for this social service. Up to the cost of this service being provided to Buellton residents only.
Yeah, please, yeah, let, let me. Well. I, I, I generally like to talk in hypotheticals, but I'm just not going to tonight.
Well, thank you.
Meals on Wheels is very easy to track, it's either provided to somebody in Buellton or it's provided to Los Alamos. Provided somebody outside Buellton. The city of Buellton can um contract for the social service of. Uh, reduced price or free lunches to be provided to Buellton seniors. That's something you're allowed to do, many cities provide uh reduced price or free meals to seniors at. Say, a, a, a community center in a park. Um, you, and they may do that with city staff, they may do that with contract staff, there is zero problem, um, no. California Constitution gift of funds problem uh at all with you funding that service to people in Buellton. You can also fund activities in Buellton, so to the extent that the center. Um, has activities where people come to the. um, has activities where people come to the center in Buellton, but they don't discriminate between residents. Um, you can help to fund those activities, uh, similar to funding uh, or, or providing space for the children's museum. Um, a very similar concept. It's in Buellton, you can help to provide that as a community amenity. So when you're looking at what to fund, you kind of have to look at those two, two buckets. And normally we always talk about the buckets of cash that we're using. In this case, you're talking about the buckets into which you're putting it. Um, one bucket is activities that can be directly traced to individuals and those individuals must be in the city. The other bucket is uh, activities and those activities must be in the city. So in this case, we're talking about Meals on Wheels. Uh, zero problem uh, providing funds up to the cost of uh, a meal for someone in Buellton. Um, if we go above the cost of a meal in Buellton, then you start to have problems because then uh, what is essentially happening is you're beginning to fund either someone else's meals or other programs without knowing it. So we want to be careful about how much we fund, but you obviously also want to be funding up to the total amount if that's the will of the council. Um, so it, it, it almost makes sense tonight from a Scott and me perspective to say, give us direction as to what you want to fund, what you want to do. And then let city staff work out with Ms. Nico, what exactly those dollars are and then come back to you with those exact dollars rather than trying to guess them on the fly tonight.
Thank you, Greg. That's what I was. I asked the question.
And may I ask a follow up then? Cost of meal is eight dollars. You said you're trying to get it to? So theoretically, well, it's eleven, but she's trying to get it down to eight. So theoretically, from your logic, if there are five meals provided at eight dollars a meal and there's four hundred and nine seniors and there's fifty two weeks, that puts us in the realm that we are within legal justification of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Cause you, we, we could theoretically fully pay for the Meals on Wheels program if we're paying that. Is that kind of, I'm, I'm not saying that's the number we're all here, but I'm just asking.
No, that, that, that is, that is the cap. That is as high as you would want to go. Um, and if you had full control of the program, you could pay up to that much.
Okay.
I, I, I will say, you did a lot of math real fast and there's a reason I went to law school. So I'm trusting you on those dollars.
I mean, it's also just on that little cap, but yeah, but it's just, but just for the sake of discussion.
Yeah.
That when it comes to concerns of us being like, whoa, are we getting too much?
How, how high can we go? Yeah.
You could theoretically just from cost of meal.
Right.
We could go up to the full cost of that.
You theoretically could do that, um.
Yeah, not saying that's the suggestion, but just so that we have numbers.
Right, and then, and then, and I can say this because I have a family member who's on Meals on Wheels, um, and it's a three time a week thing. There are weeks when it's only two because uh, Monday's a holiday or so those, you know, that's why, that's why I would say the direction would be, give the city manager sort of a cap or, or what you're looking for and then let's get the number back in two weeks so that you can approve the number at that point.
Okay, Pam, follow up on that. So do we have to, do we have accountability requirements to that? Like is there, or do we need to make sure we can?
We would definitely be doing that.
So can we, can we make an overhead for that for administration of that, for those meals?
We'd wanna, we'd wanna look at what our options with that are.
Okay, cause like is it eight dollars or is it, is it really eleven? Because we need to employ people to distribute those meals.
We, yeah, we, we need to look at that.
We need a cookie.
Okay.
Can I have one question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so in that, so, so what I'm hearing, so we would back out in Los Alamos, is that correct for the funding?
We would need to do that, yes, ma'am.
I just.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Pam.
Excellent comment.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Yeah, moving on. Uh, okay.
Well, I mean, you can go sit down.
Yeah. Okay, um, and nothing else from the public. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to Scott and, and Greg and I'm gonna have you do exactly that. Once you guys look into it, meet with her, find out what the numbers are and bring that back to us for a, for a decision.
And I would also echo John Sanchez's comments of, I know there was a discussion of the leaseback of the thrift store or whatever else to put that on the, on the.
We will, we will, um, we can start discussing that. I'll bring that back to the city council as a closed session item. So we can discuss a real estate, real estate transaction, whether that's a direction the council even wants to go.
Okay. And that, yeah, and, and as we did with, with the Williamson property, it'll be agendized. Uh, the assessor's partial number, the address, everyone in the public will know at which meetings you're talking about it. And at that point, Scott can give you sort of options and, and you can give us some frank direction at that point, but that, that is, that, and that will certainly be something that we'll want to look at. From my perspective, potential unintended consequences that we will want to talk about with you guys. Um, but it's something that, you know, i- is well worth the discussion and well within your rights to really vet and then give us direction.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to uh, item number eight. Thank you, Pam. Uh, this will be item number eight, discussion of South Avenue of the Flags crosswalk warrant. And this will be Public Works Director Rose Hess.
Thank you, Minister Mayor, Member City Council. So, Council directed staff to review the intersection of Avenue of Flags and Shadow Mountain Drive for potential marked crosswalk. Um, the city is beholden to follow the guidance and regulations provided by the Federal Highway Administration and follows the guidance provided in Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That's the MUTCD. And these documents provide assistance to the local cities in their evaluations so that we can provide an objective review of needs for controlled devices at intersections. So staffers requested Tetra Tech provide the crosswalk warrant analysis and safety study for the intersection. The analysis included traffic counts um, for the intersection, including vehicles, bicycles and pedestrian and a review of traffic accident history for a five year period. This in addition to the specific warrant reviews as part of the guidance material. Unfortunately, none of the warrants or criteria was meant to support conditions for a marked crosswalk in that intersection. That does not mean that the intersection, it's illegal to cross at the intersections, but it doesn't provide the engineering support and basis for marked crosswalk. There's also documentation that we've provided um, as part of the attachment, the Tetra Tech study is included, um, just to go over some things that we reviewed as far as accident history. There is zero accidents at that intersection. Um, the, the volume of traffic is well below the thresholds for not just a marked crosswalk, but for any other active pedestrian improvements at the intersection, including the flashing beacons and lights and warning signals. The threshold is twelve thousand vehicles per day as far as average tra- daily traffic. And we are about ten percent of that at the highest amount of, of traffic. With that, again, staff reviewed the different pedestrian volumes during the traffic counts. There was twenty one vehi- um, not vehicles, pedestrians that were tempting across at the intersection and it just unfortunately didn't meet that needs. Recommendation is still however, to provide some kind of um, additional warning signals and uh, we are looking into the radar feedback signs that, that are small and portable. They'd be located on posts or the traffic light posts in that area that would give instantaneous feedback to motorists that are riding through that area. Um, and also just to review, speed evaluation was also conducted to review approach speeds at the intersection. And it is, the eighth and fifth percentile was thirty eight miles per hour in the different directions on Avenue Flags, which is still within the guidelines of our post thirty five miles per hour speed limit signs. We do have all that signing and striping uh, for the speed limits already implemented in that section of Avenue Flags. But the addition of the radar feedback signs could, you know, prove um, helpful in this scenario as well. So with that, um, I do also want to note that staff did receive um, public comment from Mr. John Dorwin and I distributed that to you this evening. And has been included into the record as well. One of the things I just want to point out in response to some of Mr. Dorn's comments, we did review analysis for pedestrian needs. The volume is too low uh, for both pedestrians and vehicles to warrant the mark crosswalks. And just as far as general guidance, you know, as provided by the HWA and MUTCD and general engineering practices, we put mark crosswalks and make recommendations for them in areas that we want to direct pedestrians through. So that is our preferred route um, for a path of travel. So we do have crossings and it's preferred location at Avenue of Flags and Highway two forty six because we do have a controlled intersection with traffic signals at that location as well. Um, we've done several improvements to make sure that intersection and further connections to other commercial areas east of the city has appropriate ADA access um, in those different locations. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I'll bring it back to uh, council for any questions for staff.
I have questions, uh, but it's actually for Greg and Scott. Um, I was asking a little bit about this before. But there's this sort of the, the conversation or the terminology of warrants, right? The sort of whether or not the, this criteria uh, described by Tetra Tech warrants crosswalk installation. And there was a sort of concern, I remember about the liability risk of the city in installing a crosswalk where none of the warrants were sort of met pursuant to this study. I am familiar with a study that shows that adding a crosswalk actually contributes to pedestrian injury and death because it provides an avenue for people to, to false sense of security, say, to, to cross in this area and then get started by a car. So I understand that that is something that is a concern for the city. Um, having said all that, um, I wanted to, my question is, because we're not doing discussion now, right?
Correct.
My question is, uh, as long as it conforms to the general plan, we can, we can put whatever we want there. Is that fair to say?
Greg.
Yes, but.
Y- y- yes, but is, is a, a good way to put it. So the city has, you know, adopted sort of as its standard the standards that were used by Tetra Tech in doing this study. If you take an action that's not called for in the study, then you lose what's called design immunity. Because you're taking an action that is contrary to the standards that you as a city have adopted when and it's done as part of the general plan process or it's done early on in the city's life. It's, um, but when you lose design immunity, if someone, i- if there were to be an accident there, then y- your defenses in litigation are far more limited. If you have design immunity, then at the very early stage of litigation, uh, your attorneys or your insurers attorneys, depending, um, uh, uh, and, and I'll get to that in a minute. Um, the attorneys would say, we followed the appropriate design standards, the warrants were there. We have design immunity. Um, the case has to be dismissed as against the city. The city gets out of the case and the people who are actually in the accident then fight over who was at fault. When you act against the warrants, uh, there, there are two kind of risks for the city. The first one is you don't have design immunity because you can't show that you followed your own standards. Uh, so with that, you have to go much later in the litigation um, before you can try to get out. Uh, the second thing is sometimes your insurer won't pick up the litigation. The insurer will say by not following your own standards. Um, you, you've fallen outside of your insurance pool coverage and therefore you have to fund the litigation on your own. Um, in, in that case, you would be paying a law firm, my own or another, depending on the will of the council to handle the litigation instead of just tendering it to the insurance pool. So there are, um, the, both kind of, both lines of potential costs are there. On, on one hand, you go deeper into the litigation and by going deeper into the litigation, there are costs and there's a potential for settlement as, as is normally the case in litigation that goes too far. Uh, and on the other hand, you may be required to front the actual cost of the litigation. Forget about even getting to a, a settlement. So that's why we normally recommend following the warrants, um, unless there are some special circumstances or special statutory authority. And, and we've talked about that kind of authority here before. Um, circumstances in which you can actually by state law now, go outside a speed study warrant and reduce speeds by five miles an hour, even if the warrant isn't there for that. Because state law says you can, and so you don't lose your design immunity. Um, so that, that's, that's sort of where I'm stuck with it. I, I you can do whatever you want. My job is to tell you what the risks are. Um, as your attorney, I, I you know, would not recommend jumping into a, an unknown risk situation like this. Um, but certainly I won't get in the way if you as a council uh, decide to make the, the choice. Um, because that's a policy decision for you, not me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one follow up question to that. So there's the inherent risk of, uh, you know, acting outside of the warrants as designed or as, as sort of reported by Tetra Tech here. Um, what is the, is, and if there is any risk of like this liability in the city in, in, if say a pedestrian gets injured when the city knew that regular cross, crossings occurred there without a crosswalk and it was, you know, arguably unsafe as it is.
There, there are actually, um, uh, there, there are there are defenses in dangerous condition of property cases when, for, for not acting when the warrants say that nothing's required. If, if something comes back and it tells you um, you need to take action, then you need to do one of two things. And that's either take action or create a plan to take action over time. If the action that's called for would be so expensive that you can't do it all at once. You at least have a plan moving towards it. If, as in this case, the warrants came back and said nothing's required, then were there an accident there, um, and somebody claimed dangerous condition of public property? The cities, uh, the city would tender it to its insurer and having followed kind of your own standards, the insurer would generally accept tender. And then their attorneys would actually use this study to say, nothing was required. Here's the recent study that shows that. So notwithstanding the fact that people do cross, um, a- and, and they will continue to do so, the numbers don't require and, and not just the numbers, but um, the line of sight, the speed of traffic and the number of people crossing and the number of cars crossing, um, based on generally accepted standards, say, they say nothing is required. That's what the um, litigators would say at the very start of litigation is the numbers just weren't there. And so the city acted appropriately or defensively in taking no action.
Okay, can I, uh, then I have a couple of follow ups to that. So wa- is this Rose, is this the assessment that Tetra Tech did then? Would it be the same assessment that a dangerous condition of a roadway would be, would be done? Would those be the, the?
Correct, right. Essentially, it, it reviewed the amount of vehicles, amount of pedestrians, it removed, it reviewed the speed of the vehicles, accident history, reviewed line of sight and um, daytime, nighttime visibility, um, lighting in the area to see if there is like, if it's pitch dark, you know, and there'd be a potential in the evening. Um, it's reviewed all of that and has not determined that it's a dangerous or unsafe location.
Okay, uh, thank you, Rose. And so Greg, one other question there. Are you saying that the city is increasing or would increase its liability were it to act above and beyond our required things for, for a crosswalk, right? Could we make it more safe and expose ourselves to more liability? Or are you, I mean, because we're not saying this is the safest place that can be, right? We're just saying it doesn't meet these thresholds. These are the thresholds that we established in our ordinance um, for the whole city and it is what it is.
Yeah.
Generally accepted and I'm, you know.
No, yeah, i- i- it's good. I, I, the, I, I would agree with you that taking action that's not called for in, in the study does, does have a greater chance of increasing liability uh, for the reasons I said, both immediate cost and then actual liability at trial if, if things got there. Um, I, I, and I would add that the question about whether it actually increases safety or not goes back to what you had said, sir, earlier about you know, the cases that say that a, a crosswalk in a you know, the cases that say that a, a crosswalk in a place where the numbers don't line up for it could actually decrease safety, because as you said, sir, it, it gives the feeling that you're, you're safe there. But given all of the circumstances around it, it, it may not be respected by, by automobile traffic. So whether it's actually safer or not is, again, a, a policy question beyond a lawyer's purview. But, you know, whatever you decide to do, we will support you and, and give you the best, best advice going on as we can.
Thank you, Greg. I wouldn't expect nothing. One other thing, sorry, I know you want to move on. I just wanted to clarify that that study that I mentioned was the crosswalk should be used in conjunction with other safety calming or traffic calming devices. And that's all I'm saying.
So I'll ask you a hypothetical. Let's say someone gets hit and killed in that intersection after we put a crosswalk in. We get sued for ten million dollars. We go to JPIA and JPIA says, nope. And that ten million dollar liability is ours. Is that correct?
So the, the way I would answer that is to say, you're, you would tender it to JPIA. They would say that you acted outside of, of the, the warrants and they would refuse tender. Now, I'm not saying that they actually would, but that's the hypothetical, is that they, they would decide to refuse tender. You would take a number of actions. One, you would appoint attorneys to fight the claim and try and, whether it's a ten million dollar liability or a lesser liability, you're fighting the claim. Then the second thing you're doing is working through a different claim where you're bringing it with JPIA saying that you should have accepted tender. And so now you're, you're sort of working both of those at the same time. And that's a very difficult position to be in, which is why, you know, as, as sort of general counsel for this municipal corporation, I, I tend to say the, the line that, that decreases liability the least is to follow the, the engineers. But that's not always the best policy choice. And so I do understand that and I'm happy to support whatever you as, as a counsel do.
Okay. Any other questions?
My only question was, is the, there's this piece about the install two radar feedback systems? And that situation, is that because it's a suggestion of the study that doesn't increase the liability concerns that we're discussing here? Like that action could theoretically be taken without there being a compromise to the liability you've been discussing.
Correct. And, and I'll give you an example from another city because it's, this has been made public. They had residents complaining and wanting additional stop signs put on the street. And the city engineer had to go to the council meeting and explain that those additional stop signs would be counterproductive because the street didn't have a high enough traffic volume and a high enough speed volume, people would start running through them. Which then, to Councilmember Horneck's point, actually decreases safety because people are doing rolling stops when the people on the cross street think it's safe for them to go. People on the, on the primary street are, aren't paying attention to those stop signs. But that study said, instead of adding all those stop signs, we can do more red curb painting by the cross streets where there are the two-way stop signs. And so we can increase visibility, we can add additional speed limit signs. We can take a number of different steps, all of which will help on those cross street people. And that's all within the study, it's all warranted. All of those steps are perfectly allowable and will not increase liability. Similarly, here, the steps that the study calls for will not increase your chance of having things go sideways, should there be an accident. And they should help to slow, slow traffic down in that area, especially the radar signs. Thank you. Yes, sir.
The way I, what I understood is we could lower the speed limit five miles an hour or, or not.
I, I don't know that we've, we've looked at that here in, I, I know that there are, are places that we can do that, but I would have to ask Rose whether the, this street fits into those new statutory options.
It may. We have to do an updated new traffic study on this areas of, of Avenue Flags. And we're programmed to do actually updated speed surveys throughout the city and the whole stretch of Avenue Flags is one of them. We don't want to conduct them just yet because we're waiting for improvements. And this year's road maintenance is also Avenue of Flags. And next meeting, we're going to be bringing up parking and potential restriping. Not next meeting, yes, next meeting, April eleventh, or Avenue of Flags. The south segment here, south of Highway two forty-six, we go from a one lane to the two lane to a one lane, northbound essentially with some dedicated left and right turns.
Important.
So, right, so we'll, we'll be bringing up that discussion the next meeting with staff's proposal. Essentially, truck parking and other parking general. You know, on the side, the staff's recommendation still will have a basis to keep the northbound lane in this segment of Avenue Flags to one lane. That way it funnels all the vehicles to one strip essentially and have the rest buffer, parking, bike lane, et cetera, shoulders to make those accommodations and also help, you know, again, it'll help funnel vehicles. Kind of like we're making a skinny two forty-six, we're going to make a skinny south, northbound Avenue of Flags to try to help mitigate with some of the speeds. After striping and things like that would be implemented, then we would go back and do a speed survey to help update the rest of the speeds. During that analysis, we can look at other considerations and see if it fits that criteria for the additional reduction.
Are we still in questions for the staff or?
Correct.
Can, so my, my question remains, can we just decide to lower the speed limit five miles an hour? And without going fifty thousand dollar traffic study? And isn't this not a traffic study?
We had previously had a traffic study that supported the thirty-five miles per hour speed limit. And we would have to do another study. We couldn't just arbitrarily at this time because those studies are also expired arbitrarily, or I guess decisively, reduce it by an additional five miles per hour. We'd have to reconduct the speed survey.
So, sir, what, what you do is you, you conduct the survey and then under the new statutes, if the extenuating conditions apply that give you the ability to utilize those statutes, notwithstanding the survey that you've done, you can still drop it five miles an hour from where it is today. Normally, when you do a speed study, the way people drive in California, you wind up moving your speed limits up, no matter what happens. Under the new study or under the new statute, you still have to do the work, but at the end of doing the work, you can bypass, for lack of a better word, that final result of the study and drop it by five miles an hour. I've seen it done in the community in which I live and several communities with which our firm works. But each time they, they did the study, they brought the study to the city council or the, the county supervisors. And part of the study was, yes, this would be the speed limit strictly under a, a study like the one we've done here. However, because the new statutes apply, we're recommending this lower number and everybody cheered because they were able to drop the number. So it does work, but you have to do the work to get there, which is unfortunate because as you say, it costs money. But if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do.
Thank you. But be careful what you wish for. That's, uh, okay. Uh, I do have one speaker and this is going to be, uh, John.
Wait, you had one more question? Yes, yes, sorry. So Rose, this gets to the, the sort of the support conditions for the warrants being met or not. And it looked to me that some of these were potentially discretionary, like I'm on, let's see, page three of the item. Like support condition G is pedestrian channelization warrant, no, not required. That's a discretionary call, right? That would be whether or not we need to funnel people not using the, the, the current crosswalk situation on Avenue Flags and two forty-six. Is that correct?
Correct. There isn't the specific points of designation nor the volume of pedestrians in that area. So that becomes a little bit more discretionary and not a requirement for that.
Okay. Points, points of designation, meaning like points of attraction that people would go to.
Correct. Schools is a big one.
Got it.
Grocery stores, things like.
And I'm sort of circling to your letter, Mr. Dorwin. And we do have, you know, I think the point of attraction being the golf course and also this idea that RV flying flags in the, in the playground there.
Let's leave that for a discussion.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. I have other questions. The bidirectional vehicle approach speeds I noticed were averages. And so my concern in that and taking that sort of average approach is you have a lot of people turning into and out of both RV flying flags and RDM. And those, those speeds are going to be particularly low because they're not coming from two forty-six or, you know, the northern southbound one oh one. So my concern is like, was that taken into consideration? Or just like you're turning on, the radar hits you, you're going three miles an hour because you're just turning left onto the, you know, because the concern, really the safety concern, I think, is, is when people are crossing that intersection and cars are accelerating to either go toward the one oh one or, you know, coming off the one oh one. And that's sort of speed up or come down. And when people are sort of, you know, froggering across, right? So I'm just concerned about the average. Like if we're not meeting a warrant, averages and a lot of people are turning out from, from the.
The survey is going to be based on through traffic, on somebody slowing down, stopping or.
How do you know that?
The turn movement.
Traffic surveys go.
But excuse me for asking the question then, but like if we have radar guns that are hitting me as I turn onto and, and off of Avenue Flags.
They don't take those into consideration. It's only the through traffic.
Correct.
How do they know that?
It's, it's because you're going to start unwinding your speed to make this, to make the turn. They're only taking the average of the traffic that's going either northbound or southbound, not people stopping or turning. How do they know that?
Yeah, how do they know that? Not having just turned on to the?
It's all based on the count of the radar.
Correct.
On the traffic that slows down is not going to be counted.
It's not looking at turn movements. It's looking, we count turn movements. It's part of the study. So you can see directional flow of traffic, but the speed counts are completely different. And those only count through traffic. They're not taken at a position that's going to capture a vehicle that's turning.
Okay. So if I remember correctly, the, the, the radar was set up at the very front of the median when you're turning onto Avenue Flags heading southbound toward the one oh one.
Okay, those speed radars, those, the radar trailer was not used for the speed survey for this.
Okay, those were not.
No.
How, how did we calculate the average speeds then?
Through a separate survey.
What was that?
They are lane counters, right?
Yes.
The lane counters.
Correct.
They put it a certain distance away. And then, no, I was in the high patrol for twenty-five years. They put it at a certain distance and then it counts the speed and the distance and then it calculates what that speed was across that distance.
Is this?
They're not taking into consideration making a turn. You go over, you go over two indicators. You ever seen little black tubes, little black tubes they put out there? And then it gets what your speed was going between those two fixed points. They're not taking into consideration the turns.
So it drops any that don't meet the second.
Because it wouldn't have, right, yeah. The second bubba.
Right. The bubba is out. If it's only a buh, they don't count it.
So you're saying that you had these black strips, but not like, I would, you'd have to straddle the, the turning into RDM and into.
I don't believe they turn, they straddle the turn lanes.
No, they'd have to, I mean, they'd have to be on either side, right? So here's the, here's the intersection and here is the, here's the, the speed count, right? Because if I'm turning out, I'm going to hit the first bubba.
Which is not going to count?
And it wouldn't count.
No.
And now if I turn this way, bubba, it wouldn't count. It's only these guys, is that how it happens?
Correct. Correct.
That's how you do a speed survey.
You didn't either, easy.
I'm asking a question.
I, I understand that.
How we did it? I just want to make sure our averages are right.
Yes, it's, it's, and it's, this, the speed is just on Avenue Flags.
Right.
So it's going to be across lanes that are through. I mean, it's going to be across the whole thing, but.
Right, yeah.
So item H says discourage undesirable routes, and that is also discretionary call, right?
Well, right, at this, we request or we would recommend marked crosswalks at our desired routes. So we would not mark a crosswalk at an undesirable route.
But isn't the route undesirable by dint of not being a crosswalk?
No, depends again for the point of destinations. We're trying to connect, for example, the residential community to commercial facilities. Our desired route is north to Highway two forty-six and we've got other connections there. You'll, you know, we have the mark crosswalk at that intersection.
So like our general circular, our circulation plan, like that, that element of our general plan is not met by crossing RDM to RV flying flags. That's what you're saying.
Right.
More like we're going to go the economic corridor route and two forty-six route. That's where we want people.
Right. And, and the crosswalk, the marking of a crosswalk isn't a specific element within the general plan. Our general plan talks about providing pedestrian access, et cetera. So we're providing sidewalks and connectivity through the different areas and the safest locations as we can. Not the specific designation of where the crosswalks are going to be. We do separate studies for that.
Yes, I was just, so thank you. I'll, I'll lead up the discussion.
John Dorwin.
Gain attention. Take a walk with me. Let us start at the Zaca Creek Golf Course where I purchased this wonderful souvenir golf ball that says grab Zaca Creek Golf Course on it. And they get down and sold it to him. He says they're in demand because people play these golf courses and they collect the balls and they want to have A through Z. And we've got the only golf course in this part of the state with a Z in the name of it. We come up to Shadow Mountain, we go Shadow Mountain, across Avenue of the Flags. We then take my favorite detour and we go into the RV park. We go through the RV park and the gate that connects the RV park, the flying flags with the Sideways Lounge. You walk the Sideways Lounge up to two forty-six, you take the two forty-six across the bridge and now you're in the commercial center of Buellton. You're at CBS, you're at Albertson's, you then cross over to get to Starbucks to traffic supply. Again, you're taking your life in your hands because there are no crosswalks between Albertson's and the shopping center across the street. The city attorney said we have to look at all the circumstances. The city engineer suggests we have to look at the destinations, not only for vehicles, but also for pedestrians. The law which applies to you is contained within the Complete Streets Act of two thousand eight, which was codified as AB thirteen fifty-eight. This is the missing analysis in your staff report. I'll give you a different perspective than the city attorney. I'll give you a plaintiff's attorney's perspective. I would love to put your expert on trial and put this, that report on trial because it misses so many facts and circumstances. The missing fact is that this intersection for pedestrians is the gateway to the golf course from the RV park. The missing fact is, when I read that report, these were midweek studies. These weren't weekend peak hour summer studies. The golf course and the RV park are full of people during the summertime and on the weekends. We've talked about the shortcut from Rancho de Mari to the commercial hub. There are people in Rancho de Mari, I think I mentioned by letter, they can't drive. They have to use this avenue, cross the Avenue of Flags to get over, get groceries and medication and come back again. There's a bus stop right at this intersection at the northeast corner. People cross this intersection to get to the bus stop and the transit system. And that plugs you back into your general plan. What does your general plan say? Section C twenty-five, pedestrian crossings at heavily traveled intersections should be made as safe as possible. That's the goal. Protect the pedestrian. Forget about the car. That's the goal. Protect the pedestrian. Forget about the cars. The cars don't care about pedestrians. They can't see pedestrians. They can't see motorcycles. They can't see anything smaller than they are. That's a that's a problem with our brain housing group. If people don't see vehicles that are smaller than they are or pedestrians or motorcycles. So pedestrians and motorcyclists and bicyclists, they have to drive defensively because that little old lady with blue hair coming at them at ninety miles an hour is not going to perceive that they're there. Crossing controls should be installed when traffic levels or pedestrian demand warrants or as a result of demand modeling. What is demand modeling? I didn't see a computer model in this study. I'd love to put this study on trial and in the witness stand and have a case of claim against the city as a pedestrian. I'll I'll even write you the uh government code eight thirty-five section letter saying this is no dangerous uh intersection. I've I've been dodging traffic there for twenty years.
Longer than that, isn't it?
Say again?
It's longer than that, isn't it?
Nineteen eighty-eight. Yeah, you're right. You're right. Okay.
I I know where you.
The RV park is the driver of pedestrian traffic. I'd say this, the study you've got is bad data. It's bad analysis. And where was the survey of the residents of Rancho de Mari? Where was the survey of the patrons of the golf course and the RV park? This study is completely vehicle-centric. There is no consideration of the pedestrian and the bicyclist crossing Avenue of the Flags south of the main intersection. At my age, I don't have the time to go all the way up to two forty-six and wait at that light till the twelfth of never to cross. I'm going to cross at the closest intersection and I'm going to take the shortcut to Albertson's and the CBS. And I'm going to keep walking across Buellton because it's good for me and um I need the exercise. So if you recognize that the study is flawed and you look at what your general plan says you should be doing, don't spend the fifteen thousand dollars on a bunch of radar equipment or Doppler radar to measure vehicle speed to tell the motorists that they already know that they're speeding. Spend it on white paint. Put some more crosswalks in our city and follow the guidelines of state law. You ought to read what the Complete Streets Act of two thousand eight says about how we should and could be promoting pedestrian, bicycle, and handicapped access as part of our circulation element of our general plan. What the traffic engineer is saying in the do the Tetra Tech report is forget about your general plan. Let's just adopt a national standard and if you don't meet that national standard, tough luck. Well, I'm not here to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, and we'll bring it back to council for a further discussion. Lisa.
I have two conflicting schools of thought here. One, the idea of putting a crosswalk in there is concerning from the viewpoint where I liken it to the crosswalk that we have over here across two forty-six. That is, I would like, I would never use it. I would never take my kids on that crosswalk, not ever. And I liken it to that over there in that, okay, cool, we have a crosswalk, we'll let people cross there because we know they're going to do it anyway, but it's still dangerous and it's not the safest avenue for them to use to cross. Now, the other school of thought is we know they're going to do it anyway, so how can we make it safer for them to do that? And I lived in Rancho de Maria and we did it all the time because I'm not walking a three-year-old all the way up, all the way over, then all the way down. So when I'm looking at those things and I'm trying to gauge what's the safest, in my opinion, and I am not an engineer, I am not any kind of technical anybody, I'm just a mom who's going to walk, I'm going to cross. And it would be safer for me to at least have the crosswalk there. So I kinda err on the side of we should put the crosswalk there despite the fact that I still liken it to the one that's over there. So I'm conflicted. I see both sides, but I lived there, we used it, and people are going to continue to do it.
Can I jump in and piggyback on that?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I I was actually a little dismayed because I thought the direction was to like to see what traffic calming devices we could do, to see what, you know, sort of, you know, slowdowns we could do, not just limited to crosswalk, especially in light of the sort of crosswalk study. I I know I sent you your way, Scott. Because as I mentioned in my questions, the the crosswalk being one tool in the arsenal of addressing an unsafe condition. And I think one, we know people who work at RV Flying Flags Park in Rancho de Maria every day. They do it and they cross every day. And I think John Dorwin's point of not assessing by dint of, I'm not sure how you could, but special events and weekends and the volume of traffic and pedestrians that come to and to and from that area. And to Alicia's point, it happens all the time, happens every day. I do it, neighbors do it, people do it, it happens. I want to do, I want to, I want to, I feel like it's my responsibility here to to try and guide the city to then let them know it's an unsafe condition. Uh, I don't think there's any any other way to say it. Uh, something should be done about that condition because families are crossing. My own family almost got hit by somebody trying to pass. And I am happy to hear from Rose saying that we're going to try and narrow it and sort of get one lane on the north and southbound if that's happening. But I don't necessarily feel like that's enough. And I would like something to say, okay, we know this is an unsafe condition. What can we do? Not, uh, averages don't sort of pan out to be to warrant this. And so we're potentially increasing our liability by putting a crosswalk in. Fine, what are our options? And that's all I want to say.
John? Yeah, the um just conflicting things you uh worried about the traffic saying that weekends, there's more traffic. I don't think that could be possible because everybody's trying to get to work or from work and everybody's taking that shortcut in the weekends. You had to quantify that with people going to the beach. I don't know. There's not that much traffic on the weekends. And and so I understand why it's a weekday thing. And um so our safety, the everybody knows how to cross the street. If there's cars passing, you don't cross the street to to change this. And and the other, the other thing we could do is we could close the gate. So maybe you wouldn't have to go take the shortcut. That's an unsafe condition. So if we could stop that and you wouldn't be able to get through, you're going across private property.
Script of easement. I've been doing it for twenty years.
That's good, good. That I understand that. You know about easements. But um I I don't think it, if it were, we have nine zeros on this. It's 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 too bad. It's not, you know, there's not a a good guard out there holding the sign to get people across the street. But the people in Rancho de Maria can walk, could walk to two forty-six to get somewhere else. And you're you're saying that there's traffic from Rancho de Maria to cross the street. It's not there. Everybody, you act like it's a big freeway and everybody's running across the street. I I've been there forever.
Not have any outburst from the audience, please.
It's not, yeah, and if and I I mean, I've I've been up and down that street and I used to live in Rancho de Maria. But I don't think it warrants, if it doesn't warrant it, it doesn't warrant it. And putting a a a crosswalk in there is going to be an invitation for these kids at Flying Flags Park to go run right into that crosswalk. Right now, there isn't even a stop sign, which I thought was cool. Don't, everybody comes out of there. They're all cautious, you know, you and they're going uphill to get on the road and they're going slow. Everybody has a slow pace. They're coming on vacation or from vacation. This isn't a race into to to go into CBS because you're, you know, it's closing for your prescription. It's a it's a casual street. So I just, you know, I'm just not, I'm not getting it. And I don't mean to be mean, but I but I don't think it's that big of a deal. And I don't think that we should make something to invite a hazard because I think it would only be an invitation to a hazard. Right now, if it's a little dangerous, you take your time and and you and you uh you're a little more careful. And you should be if you got your kids on your hands. You don't, you know, and as far as the traffic goes, what if, what if you have to wait an extra ten seconds for the car to go to the beach instead of we're doing some. And the other thing I thought we could do is we could limit the put some kind of a sign as a deterrent, not a shortcut to one-on-one or something or, you know, to make it public that we don't want you taking a shortcut. I do it all the time. I I roll up and I'm going to Santa Barbara and I look at the Shell Station and if it's backed up there, I'll take a ride on Avenue Flags to get out of town. Everybody does the whole, the whole commuter traffic from Long Polk does it. The whole computer, computer traffic back from Long Polk that doesn't want to go through three traffic lights to get home through Long Polk takes the shortcuts so they can get to one left-hand turn instead of three traffic lights at the overpass. So I don't know if we can do something to say, please don't use this as a as a bypass or not for, you know, not for commuter traffic or something to ease the slow, but I I don't, and I apologize for not being sympathetic for crossing, safely crossing the road. But I, it isn't there. I cross two forty-six sometimes and there's nothing there and people can cross the street. And if that's a dangerous spot, then I don't know where you want to go to live in the country or somewhere that there isn't a highway or no stop signs or something. But there it isn't a danger spot to ninety-nine percent of the of the citizens. And that's that's my opinion.
I was just going to jump in and said John makes a good point. What is stop signs? Is that a possibility then?
We can review that, but off the cuff and looking at the volume of traffic, it wouldn't meet the hearts for that.
It would again need to meet a warrant.
Correct. Right, for cross traffic in particular.
Is that, and then it's again our liability rest there, correct?
That's that's correct. Yeah, that that's it's it's the same thing. It's it's acting outside of what the study shows is warranted, um increases the potential for for problems should there be an accident there. So I want to take, I want to take a moment to respect the fact that I appreciate how frustrating this has been because at this point, I feel like every resident in Buellton complains that it is not safe to cross any street and yet no study comes back saying it's not safe to cross the street or that it requires mitigations. Like I live in Vineyard Village and I know that the walk it would take to go up to cross to enjoy a McCafe at nine in the morning when I wanted as fast as possible is it's frustrating. Where I'm hung up on it is that when I cross McMurray, I am taking on the liability of being struck by a vehicle personally. If we do mitigations at the way that it's painted right now with what's being discussed, we are assuming everyone in the community takes on the liability of personal responsibility of crossing that street. We are asking everyone to subsidize the impact of someone being struck by a vehicle that we were told doesn't warrant it. I am open to the discussion of continuing to find a study that comes back with it, but I do think that that starts to become chasing facts that we're hoping for, that a study can come that will give us the protection. But we have to, for the same discussion we have up here all the time, is that I would not, I've never, I'm one of the only people who haven't lived in Rancho de Maria apparently up here, but I haven't, I I don't know what that personal experience is of how frustrating it is for you, but I know what it is on my neighborhood and I know how much I want it to be solved. And I know how many times I'm told, no, because of X, Y, Z, because these studies don't justify it. I think that a holistic problem exists where we can see it and unless you're living it, you don't have, you're like, how could no one else see it? It must be infuriating. But to ask the rest of the city to take on the liability that we would be, that if we were to take the fifteen thousand and do paint, the prices, I don't think it's our right to make other people pay for that. Whereas like when I cross the street, if I don't have a crosswalk there and I'm struck, it's between me and the person who hit me. So I just, I I I can't see the invitation for that. If we want to keep looking for studies, if we want to question, as Councilmember Hornet did, question the process down to a very finite level of was this right? Or if if Mr. Dorwin said, if if we want to do that, fine. But I do think we have an obligation that we can't take action unless there are backing by a study that gives us the protection that uh our council member or counselor has said. So that's where I'm hung up on is that though I get the frustration, I don't see how we can justify that action without the legal protections that are required with a study.
Okay. So.
So then, is there anything that we can do that would keep us potentially make that a safer intersection that would keep us within our sort of liability shield? I mean, is is the very fact that we did a study, is that damaging us? Like, will we be safer if we just put the crosswalk in without without the study?
No. You can't put the study in without, you can't put the crosswalk in without the study. If you've done so, you haven't met the warrant. Uh, if you if you look at the warrant list here, the the first section of it is support and the second one is guidance. The support are the requirements and the guidance are very strong suggestions. Um, if you don't meet, if you don't do the study, there, then you haven't met the 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 bare minimum for uh meeting the warrants.
Okay, but the warrants are only like required because of the study, I guess is my question, because my initial question to you guys was, you know, is we can do whatever we want that conforms to the general plan. And that was, yes, as long as you sort of, you don't go outside of your liability shield and if you do that, you take on the risk there.
Right.
And so you're just saying that the first step apparently is to do a study to see if you're and so we couldn't turn on a JPI and be like, hey, uh, you know, we didn't do, we did a crosswalk study, but we didn't think we needed one. We did like a raised pedestrian bridge or whatever it would be.
If if you install traffic um improvements without obtaining or without going through the process to uh verify the warrants are being met, then then you haven't met the warrants. And so you can't just bypass the study and say, we didn't do the study, so we don't need to meet the warrants on it. The first warrant is do the study.
All right, let me get my two cents in, Marv.
One second. The first warrant is to do a study and that's that's for uh being sued on a dangerous condition issue?
No, that's that's for installing traffic, uh, traffic improvements, traffic controls.
So, right, so if you're sued, they're going to say, um, they're going to look at the spot where the accident happened and the first thing they'll say is uh, when you, they'll look at what traffic control devices are there. And then they're going to say, show us the study that you used to decide to put these in.
And if we said we didn't.
We don't have a study, then you you've lost design immunity and you're moving towards trying to prove it's not a dangerous condition based on the facts of the individual case.
And our defense is Exhibit A.
Right, and yeah, and and so then, and and as as the city manager said, so once you've cleared, yes, here's the study for what we've put in, then somebody will look through it and go, okay, well, did the study support or did the conclusions come from the data saying, yes, this should be here. Um, and and I I fully understand as as um, the vice mayor said, um, and as as the city manager said, I get the frustration and one of the very difficult things is you take these at a moment in time and you take them over a week, but it's still a week in time or a few days in time. And if if the major issue is certain times of year are busier than others, then certainly you can give direction to, you know, go back and look at this again at a time of year where we think it's a bigger problem. Um, you wouldn't want to do warrants around a school on on July twenty-fifth through August first. It wouldn't make any sense. Um, but, you know, this was asked to be done, so the city engineer's office ran through it with Tetra Tech and they went from there. All right, I think this has all been asked and answered. Okay, I'm going to get, I'm going to get moving on with this. So there's some mitigating factors in all this. And first off, be careful what you wish for because perceptions often are very different than reality. Uh, let's use for an example, speed bumps. Well, people say, oh, we want speed bumps because people are racing through our neighborhoods. Well, guess what people do? They go over the speed bump and then they accelerate to the next speed bump. And then they go with that speed bump and they accelerate to the next one. So it's so it's counterproductive to what you wanted to do in the.
So it's so it's counterproductive to what you wanted to do in the first place. Human beings being what they are, human beings will do that. The other one is putting radar in. We have youthful people on this planet. Who, when they see those radar signs, they will see if they can get a personal record on how fast they could go before they get to that sign. Being counterproductive. Now, the third issue I have on this is the traffic survey and the speed survey. The average speed was only three miles an hour over the speed limit. So do you have a problem? No, you don't have a problem. Okay, so the perception of people racing down there and John and I. Uh, John made the point and I had that point myself. I've never been on the road where there is an inordinate amount of traffic or an inordinate amount of traffic speeding. So the perception that people are speeding there is really not warranted based on our personal knowledge and the traffic study. Okay, so now I have had this conversation. Well, let me, let me go back here and say. That the pedestrian crossing count, the highest one hour volume is sixteen. Is that like New York City with eight people wide on the sidewalks? No, it's sixteen people in an hour crossing there. And this is coming from our survey, okay? So as far as saying like, oh, everybody wants to cross there is not really reality. It's a very few amount of people. This is the highest number in one hour period. Now, there was another study and I had a conversation with one of our council members. Is that being in traffic enforcement myself, and I'm sure all you know that, you know, and you're all sick of hearing it. There are several national traffic studies that show more people are struck in an intersection. Crosswalk that is lined than ones that are not. Now, this particular intersection has not had a crosswalk in it ever, and there's, based on this survey that they did, zero fatalities. Is there like this big major problem that we have in the city of, you know, people getting struck in this intersection on Avenue of Flags at Shadow Mountain? No. Now. If you put a line intersection, now the vehicle code says and and John Dorva says Mark, but the vehicle code says that at 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 an intersection. In a marked or unmarked crosswalk, the pedestrian has the right of way. Now. Once again, humans being what they are. If you put those two lines on there for a crosswalk. Pedestrians will think, oh, I have the right of way. Okay. Now you just bebop and I've had it happen to me all the time. I've almost run over bicyclist in Isla Vista because, you know, they just drive across there thinking they have the right of way without giving you any. Any opportunity to slow down or stop. I'm sure all of us sitting in this room have had somebody just step right off the sidewalk right in front of us in a crosswalk because they think they have the right of way. Now, you cannot stop. A vehicle going forty miles an hour in seventy five feet without hitting that person that just stepped off the sidewalk. Takes you a second and a half to react, to perceive it, second and a half to react to it. Your car has traveled. Sixty eight, about sixty eight feet before you even put the brake on. So if you have an unmarked crosswalk, what happens? That particular individual thinks, okay, I have to take the care and caution. To not step off of this sidewalk out in front of a vehicle that's coming down the road in my direction. So if if you'd like me to Google it and send it to you, I'll show you the traffic surveys that show it's a. Higher amount of people struck in marked crosswalks than unmarked crosswalks, because people. Will take due care and caution to not step out in front of a vehicle thinking they have the right of way. And this particular individual driving the car can stop in the distance that they allowed between that vehicle at forty miles an hour and them. So I think this is a really bad idea. We have had, the survey shows that it does not warrant a crosswalk. There are no fatalities there. The amount of people crossing that crosswalk is minimal, to say the least. And I think that based on what our counselor told us, if we willy nilly stick an intersection crosswalk there. And somebody gets hit in that intersection, the onus is on us. So for putting a crosswalk there, I'm an absolute, I disagree with that.
Can I ask, is the council open to discussion about other traffic calming measures like? Even without another traffic study or is that just like, we're just gonna vote on crosswalk?
Anything you would put in there, you would have to do a survey for.
So does this survey that we have now not warrant any mitigation measures or is it?
Sounds like the radars are an option.
The radars are an option, but once again, be careful what you wish for.
Councilmember, one one thing that. And and I have done this with engineers before, um. You could direct the Public Works Director to go back to Tetra Tech and say, okay. You gave us some options for what could be done. Can you give us a full range of options for what can be done under these warrants? And and by doing, by doing that, you've you've got the study. It's a legitimate study. It'll support whatever they conclude can be done. Um, and then that at least will give you their full range of options of what they think can be done.
That would be fantastic.
I think that'd be great. At least let us fully explore it with the study we've already paid for. It's not going to be as expensive as starting from zero. And at least then we've exhausted our opportunities and our. We we can say like we did everything we possibly could to address this issue rather than we just said no crosswalk.
And I would just like to piggyback on that and say. Our general plan and circulation element. Talk about moving towards a more pedestrian, more bike friendly, more family friendly Buellton. And how else are we gonna do that unless we make these things happen and and known issues occur and I I take. Your comments, uh, Mayor King, um, well to heart, I I have read the study. And I I note that it is one tool in the arsenal of traffic calming devices, crosswalks. That is how they're intended to be used. And I just want us to sort of to look at, okay, Tetra Tech or whomever, what are what are our options?
Yeah, I think like comment.
I I want to say something based on that is that honestly, I don't think it's really prudent that the city spend a lot more money doing a traffic survey. When we've already shown that the average speed is only three miles variance from the posted speed limit. What more do you want?
For another survey, we're asking to fully.
Correct.
To fully. Explore the survey we've already done.
That's what they would have to start over again.
No, they wouldn't.
Sir, sir, I I think what what I'm looking at is the second to last paragraph where they say adding additional speed limit signage and or radar signs. Will help prompt drivers to slow down. Uh, we can go back to them and just say, given all of the numbers, given the what you've done. In addition to speed limit signage or radar signs, are there any other measures that you believe that this this study would support? And by doing that, you would save the money, you wouldn't start over, you would just say, given these numbers, what else could be done in that area? Whether it's for speed or for pedestrian safety or anything that you studied in this. What else could possibly be done? That way, we're gonna still rely on the engineers, still rely on the study, but. Um, if they think other things are possible and would be warranted, then the five of you would would know that uh in making your ultimate decisions. That that's all we're trying to do.
Nothing. I mean, they could come back and say, literally, there's nothing. You've explored it all. You've exhausted it. Go on your merry way. But at least then we would know, we've exhausted that.
And I just want to wait, one other comment to your comment, Mayor King, about speeding. I I mean, people can get killed in five miles an hour. It's not the actual speed that is the concern. It's the acceleration, it's the lack of seeing the people as they're coming out and onto the street. So, yeah, I would like to, if we can.
It's it's not so much that I'm concerned about the driver, I'm concerned about people having that sense that they are safe. Because there's a crosswalk. And and unless you, unless you know. How long it takes somebody to stop, a lot of people don't realize that the driver of that car. Will not be able to perceive the hazard, act for toward the hazard and not hit the pedestrian. And pedestrians, you know, that don't, I'm telling you this. It's just the way humans are. If there is no crosswalk there, they are going to take more care and consideration. To walking across that street than they would if they thought they had immunity from the vehicle coming towards them.
But 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 by that same logic, then nobody would ever install a crosswalk ever. They would just, they would just cross the road, right? I mean, there has to be some safe way for people to cross from point A to point B.
But we've also expanded the discussion past crosswalks by asking them to expand what they've reviewed with the study they've already done. So I think the crosswalk thing, we've already explored, we see it is not something that we can do. We're not. We're not beating a dead horse and saying, okay, you said no crosswalk, but can we really get a crosswalk? We're saying, okay, you said no crosswalk. What other options, if any, do we have?
Okay, I will agree with that, John.
Could I split, I don't know, split it into two motions? I would like to make a motion to, we've already reviewed the crosswalk warrant. But I I'd like to make a motion to deny the crosswalk and then that provide the direction for radar feedback. That's would be, if if that's on the on there too. We can make that a separate motion if we want to, if we want to ask for a radar. You know, I know you don't like radar and you like speeders with if. If we have three to one that we want, want speed or radar and three to. Two, three to two, three to two that we don't want crosswalks, I'd like to establish or get the vote that we don't want a crosswalk. And then if you want to make it one motion.
I I.
I just don't, I just think.
I don't think, I don't think that this could be a motion at this time, correct?
It is a review and.
It's discussion.
Um, well, we're looking for, we're looking for direction, so consensus of the council.
I'm going to in a minute. It's just, she's trying to say, it's just, Rose is trying to say something. I just feel like before we go down too far with this rabbit hole, maybe there's something of importance.
So I understand the council's request to look and delve further and I apologize that my staff report or the study. Um, provides of appearance that we did not. As part of the safety review of the intersection, we have looked at other means. Um, any control device would not be warranted for anything um to be implemented there. So the alternatives and other parts of the toolbox, as we discuss in other areas of the city, you know, include restriping, signage. Radar feedback signs and potential reductions of actual lanes. That a pedestrian would have to cross. Now, short of adding bulb outs and concrete type of improvements, that's why I mentioned. At the April eleventh meeting when we discuss potential restriping and the change of reconfiguration of number of lanes on the south segment of Avenue Flags. You know, is to funnel and help reduce that traffic speed and that is part of. Staff's recommendation in further review of what we can do to help. Make the area. Safer by reducing or attempting to reduce the speed that are coming through the vehicles.
That sounds, that sounds like great other options. I mean, does that include like like speed humps and rumble, rumble strips or something like that? That would require another study.
No.
If I may, I I feel like maybe we, it sounds like what we're asking for is an April, what's you're discussing at April eleven.
Right. We can bring those items in. I'm not recommending heavy, like I said. Um, permanent fixtures like additional extension of concrete curbs because that increased costs and now you're talking about. Changing pavement and adding, you know, concrete fixtures, you know. Raised pavement markers, rumble strips is going by the wayside as far as um one of the tools in the toolbox. Um, but there's other features that we can bring forward with the restriping. The main part is changing from two lanes to one lane. In each direction would be helpful as far as funneling the traffic and that's a that's and reducing that way.
So it if it sounds like direction from council. And I guess, but it's, it sounds like we're all kind of circling around the same thing of, there's a concern we have. We don't have the support of cross rocks, but we want to further explore if it's not the no crosswalks, no mitigation, it's no crosswalks. Is there other solutions that we can get creative with and what could the staff bring back to us that we could maybe work within? Is that kind of?
Yeah, okay, I will get them to do that.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say with with consensus, we will scrap the crosswalk idea and on April eleventh, we will come back with a report discussing other potential options for.
Could we decide on the radar tonight? Whether that's, yeah.
Up to council. Same time, John, so that we can see what are.
Well, it depends on the direction. The direction, I'd like to the direction of could appease some people and I think visually you have another sign, another light, another blinking. Something for the fifteen dollars for the radar. I would like to see two radars. Just so people can go out and watch it, I guess. You know, I mean, it's, I'm not, that's a joke about. So the, but but at least with the radar, we assume that the radar is going to slow traffic, which is the assumption, that's why it was offered. Then let's decide whether to spend fifteen thousand dollars to put uh the radar stickers on.
Well, I think since this is discussion, that would just be a consensus, whether to go forward with that or.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna have an expenditure of funds, we would need a normal motion, but if there are.
Wouldn't we need to bring a contract?
Yeah, we would, we would.
Right, that's.
We would need to bring the contract.
We have a direction to look for.
But Rose, did I understand you correctly that that you're planning to? It would be possible for you to bring back additional options or or additional discussion on this matter with your item on April eleventh.
Correct, okay, correct. I can add that.
So that could be like, when you bring that back, that can be like a yes or no. On on individual items.
Yes.
You can, right, you know. This X amount of dollars, that X amount of dollars, this X amount of dollars, and you vote yes or no on those individual items.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Structure it that way.
We good?
I have another question. Just kidding, just kidding.
I'm gonna slap you out of that chair. Okay, moving on to number nine, discussion of policy for flying of flags at city facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you're aware, the the um, the city council has uh had requests in the past uh to consider um flying of other flags. Um, on city flag poles. As you're also aware, the city of solving had um a a request last year which resulted in a rather unfortunate, unpleasant situation for the city. Um, because they lacked such a policy and the city council made a a decision because they lacked a policy. Uh, at this point, it would be prudent for the city council to consider adopting such a policy so that staff is aware. Uh, under what circumstances, if any, other flags could be flown on city flag poles. Uh, right now, I will let you know that we do not have a flag pole that uh is available for other. Other um. Uh, flags to be flown on unless we remove uh flags from uh from the memorial on um. Excuse me, I'm trying to median number four. Or uh unless we place a flag pole someplace else and we can talk about what options are available. Um, I I I'm operating from the assumption that the big flag poles on Avenue of Flags are part of a monument or part of a. Um, a a display that was set up and and should not be addressed or touched. If the council feels differently about that, please let me know. Um, there are a number of factors to consider with regard to this. Um, not the least of which would be a First Amendment uh issue when we start talking about these things. City attorney has provided a a list of, or I should say, I guess there are several, seven. Uh, flag policies from different cities. Um, they all take a different, slightly different approach on how the cities would approve and implement. Uh, such a policy uh for for different flags. I I will note that both the city attorney and I have uh reviewed and and prefer the Boston approach. Um, in in from my perspective, it's very simple and it's easy to implement. There's not a lot of interpretation required in it. Um, if we took that approach, it would be very um. Simple for everyone to understand how we're going to um. Go about undertaking this. Um, what we're looking for from the city council tonight is general direction. If the council is interested in establishing such a policy. We'd like some uh direction as to what you'd like to see included in that. If there is one. Um, particular policy that's listed here that you would like to try and emulate, that's great. If you want to pick and choose from policies. We'll make a list of the kinds of things you want to have included in it. What we're looking for is directions so that if you do want to. Implement something like this, we can come back at a later council meeting with a draft ordinance for you to consider. Um, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds with this right now. Uh, city attorney, if you have.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say that the reason that I like the Boston ordinance is it was. Drafted in response to the city of Boston losing a lawsuit. Um, and I I tend to think that when you've lost and you know why you've lost, you tend to write something better. And so the Boston ordinance, uh, the part that that I, two parts that I like are are first, this is not intended to serve as a free expression. Forum for the public in general. Um, and that flags will be displayed in conjunction with official events or ceremonies. Uh, as announced by proclamation or city council resolution. Those seem to make sense. Those are. Um, things that the city council has already decided that you are going to celebrate and recognize. Things that the city council has already decided that you are going to celebrate and recognize. And so the flying of of flags related to that is is consistent with. What you have already set forth, it allows you when you are making those decisions on recognitions, proclamations. As as you did this January to decide, this is what we, and and this is what we're looking to. Kind of have as our official events throughout the year and part of that will of course be flying of flags consistent with those. And then the final part that I like is that people interested can purchase the flags and then they donate them to the city. So that the city isn't running around trying to figure out what exactly should we buy. And I I would, you know, as as the city manager said, we don't have a place yet, so this will have to be something that. Is developed over time in terms of what the placement is, but. I I really like what Boston has done and and I I think it's probably as. Defensible under the First Amendment as anything because we know that that they lost and and this is what they came up with to try to not lose again. So with that, I back out and let the five of you make a policy choice.
Okay, sounds good, let's move on. Kidding. Okay, any questions for staff?
I have a question, two questions actually. Did, so if I'm understanding this correctly. If we choose as a city to say we fly no flags, that is not a First Amendment issue, it is. In not having a policy that states what kind of flags and when. Or only allowing certain flags or, you know, not not dictating that it is a city, basically an expression of a city policy, an expression of a city. Sanctioned event of some sort, but we could as a city defensively say we fly no flags aside from the United States and California flag.
That's correct.
And avoid all liability for anything.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
So that policy is a policy.
That would be a policy and if that's the decision of the council, then I would recommend that we actually come back with a policy that states that. Because what you'll see throughout the flag policies is there are also rules about lowering to half staff. And and other rules related to the flying of the United States flag, which would be good for the city to have a policy on. So whether it's what council member Lewis said, the Boston policy, something else that you like in here, those are policy decisions. For the five of you, but I do think it's important to give the city manager and myself some direction on bringing something back. So that you do have an official adopted policy.
So just, I'm sorry, David.
No, I'm fine, I'm used to you guys jumping ahead.
The, I was, I was just. Thinking about what Alicia was saying, that's what Alicia was saying, and that we already have like our our meeting for. Flags that are not official government flags unless you're, are you saying that the. CNN action flag is one and the other, the other groups we honor.
Those flags are, have been established by the city as a monument. They're they're not, they're not.
Officially flags.
Well, they're officially flags, but they're established as a monument, in other words, we don't rotate flags in and out of that. It it is a static display of the of the service flags and the POW MIA flag at that at that corner.
All I was concerned with is if we adopt an ordinance that said what Boston's saying, if Boston's ordinance says flags of governments recognized by the United States. That is not, those flags would not count, so I just don't want to have these ordinance come through and all of our own flags don't count.
No, no, that that, we we can, we can address that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you look in here, it says expressions of official city set settlement.
Right.
So that it wouldn't allow those, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, we we would certainly ensure, as the city manager said, we would ensure that a policy for Buellton. Would treat the fifty foot tall flagpoles, would treat your monuments. Would treat the flagpole at City Hall, which has certain requirements as a city hall in the state of California. And then with respect to the avenue. And the a, you know, the display of flags. Other than official government flags or flags in the monument. Let's talk about what that policy would be.
I don't want to muddy the water too much, but there have also been requests. For. Other organizations to come in and use our our street banners, place things on our light poles in the locations where we have street banners. And so we we can come up with a a policy to address that also that would. Proclude or help to minimize the potential for some ugliness that comes out of not having a policy.
I just want to be clear though, this is about flags and those are street banners, we're not talking about the street banner.
They can be incorporated into the same policy, you know, I believe I I I addressed that in the staff report, if only in passing. But it 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 certainly could be in a number, if you look at a number of the flag policies here, they do address the street banners.
And 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 again, the. The sort of baseline is the same, we want, we want that to not be a forum for free expression. We we would like or or our recommendation would be to have that be tied to. Official events, official proclamations of the city, official city recognitions. Because by doing that, you're not opening the door to. The kinds of things that Boston got sued over, which, you know, we we would rather not have. Because frankly, they conflict in some cases with. Your official proclamations, your official recognitions and so by. Having a lack of a policy or a policy that's too fuzzy about who gets to ask and why. You do get into some some awkward situations and by limiting your flags, your banners to. The city's action rather than having it be open to the public. You avoid those First Amendment issues, or at least Boston hopes so, and if we go that way, we would hope so too.
So Greg, counselor, did you do a? A deep dive on that, why they got sued, was it, was it over that they had no policy? And in your opinion, if they had a policy of no flags except official city flags, it wouldn't have been no lawsuit.
Boston had a policy that one of the flagpoles in what's called Government Center, which is its city hall area. One flag would or one flagpole, people could apply to have flags, different flags flown on it. And it was not a problem for a long time until somebody decided to apply to fly a a flag that. I think many people in the, let's say, many people in the northern part of the country would find objectionable. Given events of eighteen sixty or thereafter. And after that flag was applied to be flown and the city of Boston said, no, we're not going to fly it, then they went ahead and. And went ahead and got sued and lost, and so we don't want to get into that kind of situation.
Right.
I don't know that we need to follow Boston on flags of professional sports teams, that seemed to be something that was particular to them.
So when that particular group came to them and said, we want to fly this flag, that's, and they said, no, that's when they got sued.
That's when they got sued and they got sued because. They said people can apply and we will weigh their application and tell them yes or no. They generally said yes, they said no to that one and they got sued and lost, and so they needed to come back with a policy that was more objective. And they said.
No third party.
That the best thing that they could do is get rid of this idea that it was for public access. And make it purely a city sponsored situation and and again, reflective of. Decisions that the five of you as the representatives make.
Got you.
John?
Comment or questions?
Questions for staff?
Well, the. On this today, tonight, we can decide not to do anything with flagpoles, then any other. Any other expression. Can be done separately, I I'd just like to keep it separated, just make it.
Well, that will be direction that they will have to bring back for us to codify.
Right, that's what we're, we're, but we, it's not that we can't. Am I in comments or questions or comments? Tonight, we can, we could. Do the flags and then leave it open for discussion and a decision on different locations of expression. But I don't want to, I don't want to mix the the banners with the flags, if that's.
Well, they would need direction, John, and then it would have to come back for a open meeting for us to codify what it's gonna be.
Give direction that you'd prefer banners over flags or things like that.
Right.
And with the current policy, or if we were like, with the current situation, we have banners that are being flown. Through the art project that we just supported, correct?
Yes, all the banners that are flown currently on the light poles are essentially city sponsored banners, they are either banners that are hung. Or that are provided by the Visitors Bureau for the purpose of promoting commerce within the city. Or they are lately the the Arts and Culture Committee project.
So if we have, we are doing, let's say, Veterans Day, Veteran Day is coming up. And a group wanted to do some kind of recognition in addition to the monuments we have for veterans, whether it be by flag. Or by banner, is there a means for them to do so at this time?
At this time, there's not, we would. Anyone who came in and asked that, I would say, we don't have the ability to authorize that right now. If you'd like that to be considered, need to bring that to the city council.
Similar to when we had the recognition of Holocaust remembrance, if there was any kind of means of displaying. Solidarity with that in any kind of public manner, there would be no means for us to do so with the current policy we have in place.
Not unless the city council specifically took action on that.
And if we were to say, we do nothing, that would be that we do nothing.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything from the public?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I will note that that we did receive a a written message in the form of a text message this afternoon, I forwarded to the city council already. From Kathy Vreeland, I will forward that to the clerk for inclusion in the record.
Okay, I didn't get that as well, thank you for that, okay, bringing it back, anything further from staff?
I like the direction of Boston because, no, oh, sorry, sorry. I know, okay, my brain.
All right, bring it back to city council for further discussion and possible direction.
I really like the Boston because it gives us the freedom to recognize city. Proclamations and events, but it protects us from. Expressions that may not be unifying or good for a community and as a whole. It gives us freedom.
I agree, I don't think we need the sports recognition though, but I would also like to keep the the banners separate. I don't, I don't think that the banners need to. Be encompassed in that resolution.
But then we are leaving them open to potentially being public expression, which could be dangerous unless I'm confused.
Currently, the banners are only city sponsored and we we.
Would not change that.
Current policy is we don't allow anything other than what the city allows on the banners.
Oh, okay, and I agree, I agree.
Yeah, and I, and there was some talk about having advertisement on there and I think that was a bad idea. John, any further discussion on this issue?
Just that the. If the banners could be used for monthly recognition, like you said, we had a couple banners, we're short of putting a new flagpole up. And understand the Boston deal was over a separate designated flagpole. But we don't have a separate designated flagpole, but we do have. Places for banners and it would.
Yeah, the banner policy is already in place, I mean, that's up to us to what we'll allow there.
But that's something that we could decide to allow.
Right.
Something on those, we, because the city is already understand Arts and Culture Committee. Is gonna do the banners, but we're gonna have the hardware. For the next, we're gonna do oceans next and the next might be something.
Right.
It should, the city council decide they wanted to allow a a group that came in, let's say a veterans group that came in and wanted to put banners up. You would need to come up, the the current policy doesn't allow it, I'm sorry, so you would need to address that lack of policy to 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 allow some.
So that being said, I think that we should have a policy then, is that the banners themselves should be approved by the city council. So you're saying that we don't have.
Right, but we we need, we we would want a step farther than that because approved by the city council. Is separate from. Approved in connection with, you know, officially recognized. Events, things that, you know, again, are are on your list of of things that you're issuing proclamations for. Or you're officially recognizing as a as a council and as a city, so.
Similar to their policy.
So their their policy would would essentially be an extension of of our current policy where in the city council selects. Observances the beginning of the year, December, January, that you're going to issue proclamations for. At the same time, if you were to adopt something along the lines of Boston, you could say. As part of that process, we're also going to allow the opportunity for an an organization to fly a flag. Connected with that observance or to place banners on our poles connected with that observance, if that's the direction you wanted to go. It makes, it makes the whole process, and part of the reason I like it, makes the whole process very simple, it folds it in with something that council is already doing. It protects us from that whole public forum aspect because. The city council is deciding which observances to recognize, it's an expression of city values as opposed to an expression of. A a public free expression, so it would be very simple to do it that way, that's why the Boston ordinance seems to work real well.
One second, I'll get to you. This, if we adopt a flag flying policy, we're going to have to put another poll up.
Probably.
All right, go ahead.
So in my opinion, I think that the Boston policy is the most cut and dry. And the reason why I also like this discussion happening is that we have the unique opportunity to be forward thinking of a policy. That is not tethered to an active applicant, which I think causes a lot of concern, that when you're making decisions. When someone's asking for something is different than making decisions before anyone's come to the table, the equity that's allowed for it is much more. Much more visible. In my mind, I think a Boston policy that's in place for flagpoles and for a banner, the banners allows consistency. Easy for the community to negotiate and to understand and navigate, and I think that what happens a bit is that there's this fear or there's this concern. That there is extreme ideals or things that are taking place, but when you add these items where it's like. The the lead, the amount of work that goes into really trying to make something like this happen, when you think about like putting banners up. If we were to set like a threshold of twelve banners or whatever it is, that's appropriate amount. There becomes this thing of like, that requires a level of commitment and a level of organization and a level of financial backing. That kind of makes sure that the only people who are really engaging with this are serious people wanting to be part of the conversation, so I think that the more we structure. And the more clear we are with things, the easier it is for people to fall, to to follow and the easier it is for it to filter out. Maybe some of the concerns people have in the back of their mind about this, so in my mind, make the Boston policy for flags. For banners, set a minimum amount of banners that are required to be participatory in this discussion, that is appropriate for what we can handle in that. And you're structuring it so that it's only for people who are really looking to be serious about what's taking place in the town.
I hear what you're saying, I like the Boston policy, I don't, I want to keep the banner separate, I mean, the whole point of supporting the banners in my estimation was. To support our local kids, the arts and culture for the kids. And when they get adopted or co-opted by every proclamation that's coming down the pike every month. It just becomes one more thing and you might not even notice it, like, okay, instead of the kids having their already displayed, it's like, no, it's just win, who knows? Who knows when it would be, it was whenever we wouldn't have a proclamation and somebody comes forward with the banners.
With four to five thousand dollars in the cost to do it as well.
I'm sorry?
It costs about four to five thousand dollars to do twelve banners across this avenue of flags, so. You're thinking that every proclamation would have an organization or an individual who's willing to pay four to five thousand dollars?
For one time though, wouldn't it?
Well, I'm.
When you buy the banners and you gotta hang them, but that.
And and there would also be the 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 cost of a city staff labor to hang those. So that it it would, each each year, we may be able to reuse the banners, but there would be an ongoing cost to hang them and remove them. That that's encouraged.
Maybe we could do that down the line though, right, because might have been one way to subsidize the cost of these ongoing banners that people are looking for, I personally think that. You know, arts and culture should budget for it, but.
It's really a good revenue generator to support the conversation we had about how to keep arts and culture funded is by having outside organizations pay. With it, so you can actually structure this as a revenue generating to support the very cause you're talking about.
But can we do that separately, can we just do the flag ordinance now and give a policy for flags and then do banner ordinance separately?
You can, but what I think would be a good idea is that organizations that want to fly banners. Would have to apply for those at the beginning of the calendar year, just like we do some of our other things. So some organization says, hey, in July, I want to do this, August, I want to do this.
You're signing up to say we're gonna be.
Right, so you have that mapped out for the entire year. Instead of just them coming up like. A month before, you know, July and say, oh yeah, by the way, we want to put these banners up. And I would assume that most people that if they wanted to. To do that would be able to come up with the funding themselves.
I hear what you're saying, but but again, my concern still stands, right, so you got. I hear what you're saying, but, but again, my concern still stands, right? So you got the proclamations that come in January. And so we're, we're pu- pushing the kids banners out to God knows when, depending on how many proclamations we have. We're in a position of city council being like, well, I don't know if I really wanna support all these proclamations, because I really just want the kids banners applied.
But you could, if you had a, say, a drop dead date, say, you have to sign up for this by this date, then you could map it out. So if you have, if everybody wanted a month, you could only do a month. But if you have thirty people that wanna do it, obviously you're gonna be two weeks or a week or whatever it pencils out to.
I also think if you just set a limit at like twelve, then you're also, and I'm just saying, I'm like only twelve banners or things, then you're not crowding out. It's not like, you know, there's, there's, there's creative ways that we could have staff come back to address the situation you have, or the issues.
And that was really the, the, the point of Kathy Vreeland's text message was to say, if we, if we're, if we're applying, we're allowing outside organizations to place banners on, well, we're allowing the city to place um, banners in observance uh, in honor of these observances that you're, you're um, making in January, December. Um, her preference would be to split that up so that you get a portion of those that remain out there promoting the commerce within the city, our lodging, our food, the, the, the things that they've traditionally put up. A portion of them would be set aside potentially for the arts and culture um, programs. And then a portion of them would be, could be set up for these observances. And if in a given month, there are no observances, then the additional arts and culture banners could go up.
Right.
Something along that line. There's
Right.
Council can structure it however you, however you want to.
And, and I'm gonna rescind that notion because I think that you will get yourself in that same situation the boss did. Um, you know, if it's something like what, what, what we spoke about doing observances of different things throughout the year that was, that were sponsored by the city and not only third party come in, yes, so I rescind my notion.
Allowing open applications, it's a problem.
Yeah.
Thirty percent. How many flags, like, whole banner positions do we have on, I don't know, two forty-six? Just in two forty-six?
I, I don't know, maybe a dozen?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and count them unless Rose knows off the top of her head.
No, but I, I'm
We, we did vote to install more, didn't we?
Well, we're installing more, you mean, from the arts and culture situation, we're doing more banners there. That was going down to
But, but we are adding more.
Whatever, this many banners on, you know, you know, say, city hall.
Right, so, so sir, are you saying like the two forty-six banners would be the ones um, where the official event banners would be, and then the avenue of flags banners would be kept, what's there today? Is that the suggestion you're making?
Yeah, we, we just, or else, I guess you could put, unless you wanted to split them up all over town. But if you wanted to make it like the city hall, it's a city representation, you know, or whatever. Then it would be the three, four banners on each side of city hall, and that's, the other ones would be arts, or they could be whatever. You know?
Have the staff structure in a lot in that situation.
Yeah, and I, and I think to, to that point, that, that based on our proclamations that we have in, in previous con- uh, conversations that designate one or the other. Like if we're gonna do um, veterans banners, if we're gonna do Hispanic Heritage Month, Gay Pride Month, whatever, it could be on one street and the other ones could be arts and cultures, rather than hodgepodge them all over town.
Proclamation row.
Right?
Well, we could do it, I, I, we can bring you several options for how to look at
Yeah, and I, I think if you take a look at that, then you know, uh, so you're not hodgepodgeing like you put an American flag here and then you put some flowers on the next one, and then people are like, what is this for? What is this for? Well, you know, it's kinda like when they, the, the high school has a football team, they run all their flags down the road, right?
I'm really agreeing with you. I like that you don't want the flag to clash. What? I agree with you, like what? It is important that these are coordinated in a
I want that to be in the minutes.
I agree.
Someone agreed with me on something.
No, I like that.
Okay, but so, so going forward, go ahead, one, one more thing.
I would just like to, as a proclamation, to not change the flag to, because that would add a flag. The, the, the putting, the presentation of, of whatever group flag is, was gonna be under separate discussion.
We will, yeah.
Whereas the American flagpoles and city flags.
We'll build that into the, into the ordinance. Uh, uh, I think what what I've been envisioning through this is the establishment of a new flagpole or poles. Certainly, one could be looked at easily uh, um, on a temporary basis and ultimately a permanent basis on median three on Avenue of Flags, and if the council wanted to look at another location in town to put another flagpole, uh, we could, we could do that as well. Uh, but, uh, again, unless the council has a desire to add flags to the large flagpoles on Avenue of Flags, or to change the flag display on the monuments on median four. I, I think um, that's really our only option. We can't place another flag on the pole at city hall. We have two, that's, that's without putting a bigger pole up, that's about as many as we're gonna get
Right.
On that. Um, so, uh, we could add another pole. Uh, we, the, but e- either way we look at this, if we're gonna look at flags, we're gonna look at adding another pole, not a tremendously huge expense. It's something we're gonna look at as a, a matter of course in the design of median four anyway.
It doesn't have to be a sixty footer.
No, so if we, and it wouldn't be, it would be, it would be much smaller than that, so.
Okay.
Uh, if we did something temporary now, we could reuse it when we placed it into median four, so.
Love it.
When is that design coming back? Do we know?
Uh, I don't have a target date on it yet. Um, Andrea or Rose, do you, uh, do we have a target on a design concept for median four? Or median three, rather?
Um, probably in the next couple of months. We're working with the intern and she's had a little bit of a scheduling delay. But um, in the next two months, I'd say that we'll be seeing that.
Thank you.
Okay, nice direction, we're good.
Staff had a direction. I, I, I
Couple of options.
We, we will come back with
The Boston, similar to the Bo- is this copyrighted, by the way?
Well, we'll come back with the And we'll bring some options for the various uh,
Okay, and, and we'll, we'll also talk about um, sort of how to best adopt it. I, I'm thinking at the start, adopt it as a policy before we enshrine it as an ordinance, a policy would be enough, uh, at least in the short term and would be easier to change for the first year or two if the council felt that it was necessary to make some changes to it. And then when we're, we've tested it a little bit, then I would say ordinance. So also by doing that, you could adopt it at the meeting that we bring this back. It could be adopted, it could be official and move forward rather than wait the
Yeah.
You know, two meetings plus thirty days for it to be an ordinance, so faster the better, I think.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, yes, thanks for that work. Um, let's move on to number ten. Okay, goodbye. Uh, this is going to be a determination employee cost of living COLA for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And this will be Chanel Zamora.
Uh, Mayor King and city council member. So every year, uh, staff proposes a cost of living adjustment otherwise known as the COLA for full-time employees. Um, staff is proposing the city council to appro- to approve a COLA deemed appropriate by the city council to be effective July first, twenty twenty-four. The requested COLA or the proposed COLA um, is based on the Consumer Price Index, CPI historical internal, external, and external market data. Historically, the city of Buellton um, has used the CPI as the basis as of the proposed COLA. Uh, this year, staff is recommending that city council consider the average COLA from the survey conducted from nearby cities. Um, and then the CPI, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, for the annual average CPI from the Los Angeles area, which includes Santa Barbara County, is two point eight percent. And your attachment to on your staff report shows the historical uh, COLA that has been granted to the city and the historical CPI. The historic average COLA granted to city employees is two point, two point two eight percent. While the average historic CPI rate is two point fifty-seven percent. In addition, on your attachment three, uh, the external survey was taken of local cities in the Santa Barbara and St. Louis Obispo County. Uh, based on this survey, the average was three point nine four percent. Um, and then you'll notice that some of these cities have multiple bargaining units and all of them have uh, unions. Uh, and the three point nine, three point nine four percent is one point seventy-four percent higher than the two point eight CPI. Um, on the staff report, I per- also provided a table that illustrates the current um, staffing. So of our twenty full-time employees, twelve are at the highest staff level. So that's sixty percent of, of our employees. And a approving a COLA will help retain these employees and help recruit future employees. And then one thing I will also noted on the staff report is that the city manager is eligible to receive the COLA at the time the COLA is granted per the amended contract back in July. The fiscal impact to the city will be dependent upon the action that the city council takes tonight. If a two point eight percent increase is granted, the overall increase to salary and benefits is approximately seventy-five thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars. Uh, of that, fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-nine is the impact to general fund. Ten thousand, six hundred forty-four for the water, twelve thousand, five oh nine for the wastewater. If a three point ninety-four percent increase is granted, the overall increase to salary and benefits is approximately one hundred four thousand, six hundred ninety-seven. Of that, seventy-two thousand, three hundred ninety-nine is to the general fund, seventeen thousand, five hundred sixty-four for water and fourteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-four for wastewater. Staff recommends that the city council consider approving a cost of living adjustment as deemed appropriate for all full-time regular city employees. Including the city manager for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, effective July first, twenty twenty-four. And staff will bring back a resolution authorizing the COLA that is approved by council tonight. And if city council has any questions, I'm open to answer them at this time.
Okay. Bring it back to the city council, any questions of staff?
No questions, just comments, but I'll wait, some learning.
No questions?
You almost got a royal flush there, but I have a question. Um, last year, inflation on your report shows it was seven point five, correct?
Yes, correct.
And the adjustment we did was five point six?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that, thank you. I listened to your twenty questions, I just didn't know.
Only twenty, so, sorry.
Twenty was, yeah, that's all I had, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Um, sorry. Just I, I don't think I read any of these, just out of curi- okay, never mind. Um, no, I don't, I don't have any questions. Um, any comments uh, from, from, or any questions from the public, Linda?
No, sir.
Scott, you have anybody? No? All right, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and possible action. Alicia?
I think in looking at our closest proximity neighbors, it's important that we don't lose important staff to proximity neighbors or not so proximate neighbors. And I think that in doing right by staff and ensuring that we are maintaining the staff that as Scott has told us in the very recent past, we are and have been at danger of losing because we, we pay decent, but we do not pay I don't wanna say we don't pay well, but like, we pay decent, okay, but not as good as some other things that they could get not so far away. So my suggestion would be to make sure that we are at least keeping up with the Joneses, and I would like to recommend a five. Because if you look at Santa Barbara, if you look at Santa Maria, if you look at Lompoc Carpinteria, they're all at five. So if we aren't keeping up, we are going to lose great staff to places that will keep up. That's just my two cents.
I defer to other kind, other city councils.
John?
I think five is more than, more than, was in the budget with the, the higher is three point nine four is what they're asking for. They wanna give more than they ask for. I would uh, I was, I was thinking that was
Go ahead, John.
We're gonna start bidding again?
No. Um, well, with inflation at two point eight for this year, and considering that we were below by one point nine percent last year from an inflation to a COLA adjustment, that just means that to aggregate out for the last two years, it's at four point seven, just to cover keeping up with inflation over the last two years. And then if you go historically back, our staff has usually fallen behind by about sixteen percent over the, like, rolling averages here. So I think that five percent is a really reasonable option to actually keep up with inflation and slightly carve against, and the computer died because this meeting's been so long. Slightly carve, carve back in, at what inflation has done to our staff salaries. So I, I agree with council member Lewis.
Right. Um, and I, and I, I kind of agree with John here. Um, the staff was looking for the, like, the average, the aggregate average of all of these are three point nine four. And I think that's reasonable, uh, being what the CPI is now. I mean, we could just go with CPI. Uh, and it would be much less than what they're asking for.
Yeah.
Um,
We should have done that last.
But then, um, I think it's reasonable to do a three point nine four.
I'd like to make a motion for five percent COLA increase.
I would second that motion.
Linda?
Okay, Vice Mayor Solbak.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Uh, no.
Uh, Councilmember Sanchez.
No.
And Mayor King.
No. And I will make a motion for a three point nine four.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Solbak.
No.
Okay, then that motion passes at a three point nine four, and we will move on to city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I've got a few items for you tonight, not gonna be as short as normal. We'll go through them pretty quickly, though. Um, I would like to uh, announce something that Rose had kinda hinted at earlier. I, I give a little bit of credit to California Consulting, our grant writing firm, and uh, our public works director. Uh, the city was awarded a seventy-five thousand dollar, um, what is it, SB thirteen, eighteen thirty-three local assistance grant. Uh, this is significant for two reasons. One, it gives us some funding to uh, to do some of the things Rose was talking about earlier. But more importantly, I'll note that this is the first grant we've received since hiring our grant writer. And the grant we've received has more than paid for a, a year's worth of service from that, that grant writing serves off of. So uh, we were very happy to see that. Um, I will also note, since Pam did not mention it earlier, uh, uh, tonight that tomorrow at the solving, that's all, uh, from eleven to two, there will be a barbecue lunch honoring veterans, and uh, all are invited to that. So, um, the um, April twenty-fifth, the city council meeting will be used, among other things, to hold a city council workshop on the urban growth boundary, putting that out there. There will be uh, information um, uh, put out well in advance of, of that meeting date. Uh, all the information that's being compiled for this urban growth boundary process is being placed on our city's Buellton Engage page. I will give you the uh, URL for that right now. It's, it's about this long, but if you go to um, uh, tinyurl.com slash Buellton U G B, that's all one word. You will get to the U G B page on our Buellton Engage page and all the information you're looking for, uh, excuse me, can be found there. Lastly, um, I would like to announce that as of three thirty today, uh, the barbecue bonanza, or excuse me, not the barbecue bonanza, the extravaganza event uh, that is scheduled for this Saturday. Um, it will be raining, but the event is on, and it will be modified a bit um, uh, to, to avoid some of the problems with the rain, but it will be on, it's at ten o'clock on Saturday morning. We advise everyone not to be late because it tends to happen We advise everyone not to be late because it tends to happen in a hurry, and if you are late, it will be over. So um the the egg hunt itself will be over. There are other activities throughout the morning there, but um uh, just want to let everyone know it has not been canceled at this point, so. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Is there, is there like a threshold of rain there? Is this like dumping, still the other?
Uh, I suspect, what what I've been told today by the recreation departments, this is a joint event between the rec departments for Buellton and the city of solving.
Yeah.
If there is an unsafe condition, uh, thunder, lightning, um, uh, extremely heavy rain, they will cancel the event, but um at this point, there there, there could very well be rain, but yeah, expect your kids to be wet and muddy when they come out.
All right.
Ninety-one percent chance.
That's pretty Counselor, anything?
Not a thing, sir.
This meeting until April eleventh at twenty twenty-four at six P M.